Public access in this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have some elements of public comment because we will have a public hearing at seven twenty. First, we'll confirm that all members of the planning board are present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Artie Crocker?
Here.
Paul Alpert?
Here.
Natasha Spata?
Here.
Jean McKnight?
Here.
Excellent, and Adam Block is obviously present as well. For those participating in the meeting, and for those attendees that we will move over to participant as we handle your agenda item this evening. Please be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting have already been uploaded and are available in the town site, including the agenda at Needham MA.gov. Unless otherwise noted, the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce each of the speakers on our agenda after they conclude their remarks. Each board member will be asked for their comments, questions, or any motions. When the opportunity for public comment arises, and you're called to plan, we obviously ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and we may go over any additional rules governing a public hearing when we get to those. But in the meantime, I'd like to start with agenda item number one, which is a de minimis change in respect of a major project site plan special permit number ninety-nine dash two relating to the property at one forty Kendrick Street. Care of Boston Properties with respect to a proposal for an outdoor roof deck. Alex, are you able for that meeting? I believe we have three participants. Brett Lambert from Stan Tech, Rick De Angelis from Boston Properties, and Elise Lund from also Boston Properties. So first of all, we see we see that Rick is present, but Rick, your video is not on. And then I see that Elise, you and Brett and Rick are all, there we go. Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate that. You're all muted. I just want to ensure that you're audible and we can hear you. So take you so Rick, we hear you, Elise. What about you? One more time, Elise. Elise, we cannot hear you. So I'm going to pause on you for a minute, and I'm going to go to Brett. Brett, you want to say hello? Welcome. Give me a high five or something.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can see you. We can hear.
Excellent. And now let's try, Elise, let's try you one more time.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. All right. So this is not a Verizon commercial. We're all present. We can hear each other effectively. Wonderful. So I guess I, Brett, do you want to, do you want to start this off or Elise or Rick, who wants to go ahead and take the mantle on this?
Let me give you a little bit of an introduction. My name is Rick De Angelis. I'm Constable of Boston Properties. I have been there for quite some time, going back into the eighties. And I was involved in and did the original permitting back in nineteen ninety-nine for the Kendrick Street property, one forty Kendrick Street. We were before you previously for another modification that dealt with exterior work to convert the building into a multi-tenant building. And after deliberation and hearing and deliberation, you granted us a an amendment to the existing special permit. We're back before you now for a minor modification. In order to create a rooftop deck, a deck on the roof of the low-rise building, which Brett will get into in more, much more detail than I will. And we had previously gone before the design review board, and I know they sent off to the planning board their approval decision. I have a copy of it. And they were very good to deal with, and they had some very good constructive suggestions for us for future actions. Should we have to come back before either the planning board or the design review board? But we find all of that stuff educational and helpful and we're this kind of a company that likes to get feedback and improve. We can always improve, and Needham's been a great partner in town for us to work in. In any event, we're seeking a approval for the rooftop deck on the low-rise building. And I will say this, the building commissioner, the building inspector, David Roach, was very, very good to deal with, as have your staff, Alexandra in particular, particularly in Lee as well. David had one question which he called me about, and that was whether or not there were two means of egress, ingress, egress. He couldn't tell from the sides of the plan. We told him we'd get him an answer. We did. But I think he was under a deadline, so he wrote his letter that said he couldn't tell whether or not the, there was a second means of egress. There is a second means of egress. This rooftop deck was designed in accordance with and compliance with all applicable codes, be it of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or bylaws of the town of Needham, and including the the ax test issue, the select safety issue, as we all know. In any event, Brett will get into that. So without further ado, Brett Lambert from Stan Tech, our architect of record for this project. Brett?
All right. Thank you, Rick. Can can everyone hear me? And I guess before I start, anyone on the committee want to have any questions for Rick before I go into the presentation? Okay. So again, my name is Brett Lambert. I'm a principal with Stan Tech Architecture. I've been working on Boston Property with Boston Properties on this project. And I thought, well, let me share my screen first of all. And I'll make sure. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Just to start real big picture, I assume most of you, if not all of you, are familiar with the site, but the one forty Kendrick property is at the corner of Kendrick Street and ninety-five with the pond to the bottom of the screen. And I'm sort of stepping back, so just to make sure everyone understands the area where the roof deck we're talking about tonight is, and that is on this square piece of roof right here between what what we call building A, which is the where the new tenant will be moving in. Building A is a three-story building. The part of the roof, the part of the building where the roof deck will be is a two-story building, so it would be accessed off of the third from the third floor of building A. And to the left side, this curved building is the new newer amenity connector building that was built a couple of years back. So the area we're talking about in question is this small area right here. I'll jump over to the drawings. So that area is this square piece of roof. It's roughly forty feet by forty feet. The whole roof is going to become the new terrace. And to answer the the building inspector's question, more specifically, there are two new doors being added both into building three. Sorry, building A, and those two doors are at a distance apart that will support the overall size of this roof terrace. And you know, not to get too far into the code, but what we what we do is we take the diagonal and make sure that these two doors for sprinkler building are at least one-third the distance of the overall diagonal, which they are. So that will support the full load of the occupant load of this terrace. One door goes down through a ramp and the other one through a set of stairs. And those, again, are the two cut into the existing building. So the roof terrace itself, just to give you a taste of the materials that are going to be used up there. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, just obviously because this comes up and you were just speaking to the question of the two egresses. Yeah, can you scroll over to the left a little bit, other direction? Other direction, a little more. Perfect. Well, there. Can you show where the two egresses are in this image here?
So this is a door. Yeah, I apologize that this is not showing up too accurately in this rendering, but this is one door, and this is the other door, and these are four new or five pieces of glass in between the two. So one door is to plan south over here. That's this door right here, and then this is the other door. Both of those go into building A.
So it's not accessible from the other building to the left?
No, there is a grade change with the existing building, so this terrace is only serving building A.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So the entire roof will be covered with roof pavers. The roof pavers are going to be wood pavers. They're made out of black locust, which is a sustainable alternative to EPE pavers. Usually when you're out on a roof terrace and you see roof pavers, they're usually made of EPE, which come from South America. This is a black locust alternative, which has grown domestically. So the entire area would be covered with those roof pavers. And then the existing brick parapet on either side right behind that would be a glass rail system. These are two photos from similar projects, just to give you a sort of taste of that glass railing. It's a glass panel. It rises forty-two inches above the roof surface to act as a guardrail. And we are proposing to put a stainless steel handrail in as well, just so people on the terrace understand that there is a glass rail there. It gives a little bit of extra comfort and safety and understanding that there's a railing there, something for someone to hold on to. There are two gates in in the design, and those are locked gates. Those are purely for Boston Properties Maintenance to access the other parts of the roof if there's any ever need for maintenance, but for the occupants, those gates will be locked and there will be signage. So the only part of the roof that is accessible is this square area right here. And then we submitted a rendering to the design review board. You could see better in this image, the two doors as referenced by the thicker frame. So this is one door again towards the pond area, and then this is the other door, which is closer to the courtyard. This is showing the terrace wide open. The terrace will obviously have furniture and something else added to it by the move, you know, not not fixed furniture, but the the tenant will will be able to fill this space in. And then the glass rail on all sides to 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 keep the occupants in that area. So and and the reason, one of the reasons behind the glass rail which came up on the design review board, we're really trying to make sure from as best we can from the the trail along the pond or the plaza side, that when you're looking up, there's really not a lot of visual impact to the building. You'll just see the top of the glass rail and that that handrail. So I think that is it. I'll turn it back to the committee and certainly Austin Properties or myself can answer any questions or flip to any other images.
Thank you very much, Brett. Elise, did you want to add anything else?
No, not at this moment. I can answer any logistics questions that you may have, any construction items.
Thank you.
I don't have anything in particular to add.
Okay. So a couple of things before I just go to my colleagues. One, we have received two comments from staff departments. One from the building commissioner that Rick you had mentioned, saying that it was unclear as the rest of us saw on what the two means of egress were. And and then the memo from the design review board, which recorded their approval without condition. One question that I had is, and it wasn't clear, Rick, from when you were providing your introduction, have you had confirmation, written confirmation even by an email from Dave Roach, affirming the two means of egress or his satisfaction with those?
No, he suggested that I would deal with it before the board tonight.
Okay, so.
I also spoke with him, and he didn't have any additional comments or questions. He seemed satisfied with the with the design and the answer.
So you so you answered his comment and demonstrated on his plans where the two means of egress were?
Yep. So I had a conversation with David last week about the question.
After the date of the letter, okay. Does anyone else on the board have any comments? Natasha, I recognize you first with your hand up.
Yeah, just a question. Elise, could you could you explain what what the egress is? And do you have a occupancy of over forty-nine? Or over fifty people?
Elise, I could jump in on that. I mean, the occupancy can be over fifty people, which would be what would be requiring the the two means of egress. You know, I guess I would add that the 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 set of construction documents that have been stamped by our office with the construction affidavit show two doors. Both are swinging in the direction of egress. And as I said, they are roughly twenty-five feet apart, which supports the overall size of the terrace to provide.
Sixteen hundred square feet.
Correct.
Right. So so my question is is more of inside the building, there's only one stair. Is the building department okay with having just one, even though you have two means of egress from that room? It looks like there's only one route to one stair. I'm just I'm just trying to figure out where he was coming from. Is that was that his concern that there's only one?
There are two stairs existing in the building.
But both of these doors are leading to they go by the same stair. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there because it I'm just concerned about the amount of people and and the means of egress. If there's something, and does the fire department, do they have any comments or?
We don't have in our package. Lee, have you heard from Dennis Condon? Lee, you're muted.
Trying to unmute. Yeah, no, we have not. Dave was the only one that offered that comment.
Okay. And then my other, I have one other question regarding the the wood that you're using. I see that it's a light colored roof, so is the wood gonna age? Is it gonna age naturally? Or are you staining it so that it's darker?
Similar to EPE, it can be stained, but any wood that's sitting on a horizontal surface is going to age over time.
Right, so it'll just silver, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
Similar to like a cedar.
Yep. I mean, is it EPE? Is that what you said? I'm sorry.
It's not EPE.
Like an EPE.
It's like an EPE.
Yeah. And so and then the other two questions are more utilization. Is there lighting out there? Will you be and and what what hours will it be utilized?
Well, I'll let Elise maybe speak to what hours it could be utilized, but I will say first, from a life safety standpoint, there are lights to light the egress doors, and there are exit signs.
Okay.
So at this time, we don't have any hours of operation. We're kind of in the preliminary process. We can definitely ask the tenant if they have anything in mind. My guess would be it would be more used during daytime hours, during working hours, and maybe twilight, but I don't I don't foresee any usage during nighttime hours.
Okay, but those are all my questions, Adam. Thanks.
Thank you, Natasha. Anyone else on the board with comments or questions? Jean?
Yes. Regarding the plans, I just want to make sure that we don't need, very often, if there's some question that's not answered by the the plans that are submitted to us, in our decision, we say that we need revised plan. And I'm looking at the plans, the ones that actually were delivered by mail to us and also were in our packets. And this, I'm trying to look at where it clearly shows these two doors. And I think I had to find it in this packet. And you know, in our decision, we refer to the plans that are submitted, and I just want to make sure the plans are complete.
Jean, on page six of our packet, there's a red outline on one door and a and a red outline on another door, at least on one of the sides of each of the doors, which was Brett had highlighted in red. So that's I see that on on page six. However, I think what we're what we're clearly asking for here is to revise this piece, you know, to revise this sheet of the plan, and maybe mark in yellow the outline of where those doors are. And that way we clear, you know, we square off for our files. And with Dave Roach that we have a revised plan.
Yes. Yeah, something like that, because I mean, I'm looking at the paper plans. I did review the packet, but I didn't quite, I wasn't quite able to find that that data. So we want to make sure we have that data clearly, and if it requires a plan amendment, that could be worked out in the decision.
Yeah.
Lee, was somebody?
I can add that as as a condition. If Dave was not clear at looking as he looked at these drawings, and if it wasn't clear to him, I think we can clear it up on the plan so that there is no, so it is clear.
Okay. All right. Oh, yes, because in answer to Adam's question of whether this was demonstrated on the plans, Elise said yes. So perhaps it has been, and Dave will be satisfied, and there'd be no need for anything further. But if not, as we said. Okay, well, that was my only concern. Thank you.
I would think that if Dave's not satisfied, he won't issue the building permit.
Right.
So we do have the building permit for this for this set of plans.
Yeah.
Because it's included in, so we have a, we have a entire drawing set for the entire project, and this is just a subset of the project. So we do have a building permit, but are obviously not proceeding on this part of the design until it's approved by both the design review board and the planning board.
So and you have you have approval by the design review boards. You're waiting hours. So Artie, do you have any other comments or questions?
The only comment I had was a little strange, the beginning, making it sound like we're the arbiters of whether the whether Dave is going to approve the X, the two exit aspect. Maybe because he needs, I mean, he needs the plans, which clearly shows, and I mean, obviously, it's good that we're making sure that they're obvious for us, but no, you know, the, you know, he's the building department, he's the one giving the building permit. We're just letting we're just letting know that it meets our basic standards. And yes, of course, if you're looking at the exits, it's necessary. But clearly, but as stated, as stated, that is what was just stated by us, this is a very minor subset of the whole package itself. And so what he gets is maybe a full building permit. I love I love I love roof decks, though. I think it's I think it's great. I think this is this is awesome that you guys are putting this in the building, and I love them. Just a matter of just giving, making sure people can access it safely. I think it's clear that they can just need to add a little extra credit to it. That's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Artie. Paul, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'm I'm just, I'm just thinking that since we have the letter from Dave Roach raising the issue, we need to have something in our file, whether wh- whether it's revised plans or something else from Dave Roach that signifies that he's satisfied.
So I would say.
Sorry, could I just respond to that? I just wanted to share my screen. I'm looking at the packet, and I want to make sure everyone understands this. Is is this page in your packet? Hold on.
Do you share your screen? Oh, here we go.
This page in your packet?
Yes, it is.
So up here, if you could see my cursor, these dashed lines indicate those two doors. That's typically what an elevation would show for two doors. And then the plan itself shows the door swinging into the stair and the door swinging in. So I I completely understand, and we we could modify this drawing to show those dashed lines to indicate that those doors are there. But I I believe there is a plan in an elevation that shows it.
So I think Brett, you're right. There is. However, it remains unclear, both to the members of the board and to the building commissioner, having said that I acknowledge your conversation and certainly Elise's conversation from last week. So all we're asking you to do is just add color, because you've got four separate images on that sheet. And although I see where your cursor is that red, and I see it on on my screen, it's not clearly visible. So I'm going to ask that we have a motion to approve the de minimis change with 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 a revision to that sheet of the plan set highlighting more clearly the two egresses and Lee, you can tell me if this is overkill. And, you know, a letter for a file from Dave Roach acknowledging or an email to you, Lee, acknowledging that he's reviewed the revised plan and is satisfied.
I think that's fine, Adam. I would just ask that I prepare the de minimis change reflective of what you just articulated, and you can sign it and vote it at your next meeting.
So theoretically, I'm fine with that. Our next meeting is July seven. And we have, we're going to have a pretty intense meeting that night. What else is on the agenda for that night?
Just one thing so far, and that's the hearing on Muzzy.
Okay, so.
You know. Mr. Sheriff, we could suggest that we make do the a motion that at least that says we determine that this is a de minimis change.
Yes.
That would help. In that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to acknowledge this as a de minimis change. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, we're unanimously decided that this is a de minimis change. Lee, you were in the middle of saying something?
I think this is simple enough that we can just prepare this and not force it to go on to July seventh, based upon if you're, if you want to approve it, you know, subject to the plan being modified to make clear that there are two doors providing access to the to the roof deck.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I moved seconded.
So I have a motion by Paul, seconded by Artie to approve the with to approve this with an updated revised plan as discussed. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote in alphabetical order. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, we're unanimously decided. Thank you very much, everybody. This item is dismissed. While we move forward, thank you all. Thank you, Brett, Elise, and Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time with us.
Very good. Thanks for being with us. Would you like to now, Alex, please bring over George Jenta, James O'Brien, Adam Dash, John Pachoka, Ron Khan?
I'm actually, I'm going to let George tell us who from that group needs to come over, because when he sent it to me, he said either just me or up to all of the people here. So George, could you let me know who of the panelists I should be looking for? I also brought Adam Dash over because he did reply to my email, but does anybody else need to come over?
I I think if you've got Adam over, we'll start with that, and then you can always bring over John or Ron if necessary.
Sounds good.
I'm here, yes.
Very good. Would you like to start us off with a five to eight-minute presentation?
Hopefully it won't take that long. All right, so this is this is a pickup of the the application for the property at four twenty-two and four forty-four Hillside. That was before you previously for a sort of a minor revision to an old site plan special permit. And if you recall, the issue was a survey had determined that there was inadequate lot width on the four twenty- Uh, and if you recall, the issue was a survey had determined that there was inadequate lot width on the four twenty-two Hillside Avenue property. To do a division, which is what we had originally intended to do and what we wanted to do. At the same time that we were going through the process to amend the prior site plan, a special permit. Uh, a second survey was being conducted and the results of that survey came in after that hearing. And fortunately, uh, determined that there actually is sufficient lot width. Uh, on the four twenty-two Hillside Avenue property to carve that off as a separate compliant lot. So therefore, we're before you this evening with two things. The first is a fairly straightforward approval not required plan. To essentially slice off the tail of four twenty-two Hillside to create, uh, a standalone lot. With the building at four twenty-two, which I'm going to refer to as the Gentle Giant Building, along with the parking in front and the parking in back. Uh, the parking in back is accessed via an easement that is shown on the plan that crosses what was the tailpiece that was attached to that lot previously. Uh, and then, then that piece getting cut off is getting added to the four forty-four Hillside property, uh, as shown on the A and R plan that you have. So that's pretty straightforward. Uh, assuming that the board votes to endorse the plan as approval not required. That will then render our previous application moot. And you also have a letter from me. Basically saying, subject to that endorsement, to withdraw the previous application, uh, because we don't, basically don't need it any longer. So that's it. So fortunately, it looks like, uh, we have a, a, the, the preferred cleaner solution to the situation.
Thank you very much, George. Adam, do you have any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, for the record, Adam Dash, uh, forty-eight Grove Street in Somerville, Mass, uh, representing Gentle Giant Moving Company, Inc. Now, as usual, George did a great job of summarizing things. The, I would just note that what really happened is that the, um. My, my client had a surveyor who's doing a survey to purchase our part of the property and looked at the survey that we'd, that George's client had provided. And looking at it, felt that there was something wrong with it and went back and actually ran it again. And it, as it turned out, um, the properties were actually compliant for what we're trying to do here for the subdivision as opposed to non-compliant. He just, he was just having a second set of eyes, take a look at it and sort of measure it again. Um, so that's how it all, how we came to be. This is certainly the preferable solution to what we were trying to do before.
George, are you able to share your screen and show, um, uh, the survey? Or from Hancock and Associates or Adam or you?
I, I could, yeah, I can show the A and R plan. And as I'm doing that, I will say there's one other little thing I would ask. I didn't, you don't actually have this in form of a letter. But I would ask, it's a minor thing that, uh, given that we, that we, uh, paid the, the hefty fee for the special permit modification. Uh, that the, the small filing fee for the A and R plan be waived. And so there you go. There's the, uh, you should be able to see that now. And.
So.
And so.
One, one question that I, that I had, George, was I see the lot with measurement. With a line running through the building at Lot GL, which would become the, um, uh.
Six L.
Building.
Six L.
Six L.
Yeah, right here.
Thank you. Yes. And then I see the lot measurement is, uh. Is a hundred and fifteen point three inches or, uh, and three inches. Uh, for the center automotive lot. Lot six M.
About this measurement here?
Yes, but that's not measured through the building.
Uh, well, it actually clips the little corner of the building here. A- and, and, and presumably the lot gets bigger as you come forward. So if it's a hundred and fifteen feet here, then it's going to be more here.
I mean, we see it's a hundred and sixty feet on frontage. Um. Uh.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think the attempt with that line was to show the worst case scenario going through the building. As far as the width, that's the short, that's the smallest width when you go through the building.
I appreciate that explanation because I did not understand the distinction between the two surveys. And that that satisfies compliance. Lee, that's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So on that basis, I turn to the board. Uh, does anyone on the board have any comments or questions? Uh, Jean?
I have two. Um, I know, uh, at our discussion when, uh, this was for us previously, um, as a, uh. Special permit amendment application, um, we were concerned about the, uh, the lack of maintenance of the landscaping. On what now, what is now shown as lots excel. Um, I would, I want to ask, how is that going to be addressed?
Uh, Adam Dash, again, for the record, Mr. Chair, uh, through you, the, the, it would be the address the same as we were discussing last time. While this is changing the, the legal way we are doing the subdivision, instead of having to do a commercial condominium, we can actually subdivide the properties now. The landscaping would still be the landscaping we were proposing before. Um, as you can see, I mean, most of the lot is obviously paved, but there was the area in the front and the area by the building and that was always going to be fixed up.
Okay, and that leads to my second question. Um. Don't we still need a, a modification of the original special permit? Now, maybe it's a minor modification and we really didn't need the hearing, don't need to continue the hearing. Um, but, um, this is a different arrangement for parking, for example, through easements. Um, i- if I'm not mistaken, um. Uh, I wonder if that could be addressed both by the applicant and, uh, perhaps by our planning director.
So, so Jean, indeed, we will need to come back in for, for some sort of additional relief, minor modification or, or whatnot. Uh, with respect to the four forty-four building to add the parking. Um, i- if you can see my cursor, the existing property line goes right like this. And so everything forward of that, this line is currently the four forty-four property. So this parking back here is going to be added to the four forty-four property, but it's not currently a part of it. So that, so we will need to come back before you to formalize the inclusion of that parking, uh, as a part of the, the four forty-four property. But we can't really do that until we get, until we get past this step.
Okay, um, I was kind of hoping that, uh, there would be a need to come back as well. Um, for, uh, four twenty-two, um, because, um. Oh, it's, isn't, it's, uh. Parking changing too.
Uh, in theory, the parking is changing, but four twenty-two is not currently subject to any special permit and it doesn't require any special permit.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So, so therefore the use, the use, uh, Gentle Giant's use is, isn't allowed, uh, by right use. So, uh, basically nothing with the four twenty-two property triggers the need for any additional review.
Okay, so what permitting, um, actually requires the landscaping? Um, that was shown on a prior plan, but not fully implemented.
So it is the, when the building was initially built, the building went through a minor project review. And the landscape being shown on the plan that was approved as a part of the minor project review. And, and actually, I, at some point I went back and I did find an old photograph that you could see. The landscaping was there at one point and it's just over the years, it's just died off and was never, never, uh, really, you know, never appropriately replaced. Um, but, but it was there at one point in the very beginning and then it just withered away.
Okay, so I suppose to give an extreme example of, you know, how, how is something like that enforced? It's still in effect with regard to, um, four twenty-two as, um, um, uh, site plan review decision. Um, and if landscaping isn't done, you know, we could seek, um, you know, re- rescission of an occupancy permit. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think myself, well, how do we enforce this, you know? Um, but I hear you saying, um, that, that certainly you are going to, um, re- refresh the, the landscaping to, to what it. Was supposed to be and in fact originally was.
I would note the building has been vacant for some time, which is probably one of the reasons why the landscaping has not been cared for.
Mm hmm.
Four twenty-two building.
Yes, right. Okay, okay. Well, time to move on. I'm here. Thank you, thank you for your response.
Natasha?
So just, just following up with Jean. So the, is the landscaping plan? Do you have the landscaping plan that, what you're replacing it with? Um, I was just, I'm just looking at the Google Earth of it and it's, it's. It needs to be replaced. So I guess what, are you replacing it with the same in kind? The, the center automotive, I guess the tire shop. It's very well landscaped and the other one, um. Seems, I, I know that you're saying you're replacing it, but what are you replacing it with and, and, um?
George, you had the plan last time when we were.
Yeah, I'll, I'll. I'll see if I can pull that up, but, but be, but before I do that, I'll just point out, so Natasha, it's really, I mean, this little. Circle, semi-circle here, that, that's, that's effectively, uh, the landscaping and then there's a little bit along the, the side and sort of in front here too. But it's, I mean, it's pretty limited, uh, to begin with. And this was, you know, a cluster of, uh, I think it, it might have been a rhododendron and maybe one or two other shrubs. Uh, back in the beginning, which, which died off and now this is just flat grass. But let me, let me see if I can.
Yeah, and so over here, it looks like there's some over here, a little bit over here, and there's a tree right here or something to that effect.
Yeah.
So will that be replaced also? I'm just curious to, how much, how much is being replaced? Besides the little thing in the front?
Adam, do you wanna?
Are the tree, I mean, I, I'm not, I haven't been over there to see if the trees over by the building are, are doing well or not. I know certainly the landscaping by the street is not. Okay, you bring, um, John Pazoka over from, uh, Gentle Giant. I think he's been, oh, he was over at the property just yesterday.
I have a picture of the property, uh, from earlier today. Hmm. When I attended.
You sure, Adam?
Uh, yeah, I can. Uh, bear with me. Um, Alex, are you able to bring over the person that, um, uh, uh, Mr. Dash had also wanted to bring over?
Assuming this is the right person.
Uh, John, you know, John Pagocia, he's the, uh, he's a vice president of General Giant and he's the operations manager, so. But I mean, the idea is the key is to put the plants. I think we showed George last time, showed the planting plan and that we weren't looking to do anything. Anything different or crazy over there. It is an industrial zone. As George said, there's not a lot of planting ability there, but. Certainly we want the place to look nice or reflects on the company. We don't want it to look bad. And the only reason that looks bad is because the place has been abandoned for a while. So, four twenty-two building. So getting back in, that would be much nicer.
And if, if I may comment, um, it's across the street from a general residence district, uh, with, um, two family homes and so for that are nicely landscaped, um.
Oh, sure. I mean, it looks like the tree is okay. So I, I don't know, the tree looks like it's doing pretty well there. The, uh, and the front part, instead of rhododendron is grass. I would say it's, it's landscaping. It's not the most creative looking landscaping, but it is, it's not like it's dead. It just, so, um.
Grass here, some grass here.
Yeah, and then.
Shrubs here and here, a tree, and I don't know what else is planted in here. So. Um. Uh, is. Uh, did anyone on your team want to speak to additional landscaping? And Lee, with an A and R. Um, I can't recall if a landscape plan is required for endorsement of an A and R plan.
No, it's not required. You have no jurisdiction on an A and R plan for landscaping.
Okay.
I think the jurisdiction really rests with the original, um, minor project review that was done and what was represented at that time. And that that needs to be basically maintained. And if it's dead, um, it needs to be, uh, replaced.
Okay.
And, and I have, I have found the, uh, the, the as-built that went with the, uh, the minor project review in the building. So I can show you that and show you, it actually calls out what the plants were.
Or that was from before. We have your commitment that you're going to refresh it now. And, uh, we have, um, you know, ability through our previous special permit. Uh, or site plan review, uh, to enforce compliance. Uh, does anyone else have any other comments?
I'm all set.
All right, uh, seeing none, then, um. Can I please have a motion to endorse the proposed A and R plan?
So moved.
Okay.
And can I have a second?
Second.
Artie, second.
Okay, so I have, uh, motion by, uh, Paul Alpert and a, a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote again in alphabetical order, which is how I'm going to continue to do it. Uh, uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Uh, Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair is, I were unanimously decided to endorse the proposed A and R plan. Do we need a motion to withdraw the application to amend the special permit?
You need a motion to accept his request to withdraw, um, the previous special permit without prejudice.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Jean McKnight and a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair is, I, I were unanimously decided to accept withdrawal of the, uh, um, patient to amend.
Um, there's one more vote I think that's required in this case. He's requested a waiver of the filing fee for the A and R in lieu of the special, the, uh, fee that he requested on the special permit.
Thank you. Do you want to have a motion for this?
Um, I moved up, we, um, approve a waiver of the filing fee for the, um, uh. Seeking endorsement of, um, subdivision approval not required.
Okay.
Do we, and we have a, so I have a motion by Jean McKnight and a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair is, I were unanimously decided to waive the, um, uh, filing fee. Uh, for this application, um. Do we formally need a motion to, uh, uh, adjourn the hearing? The previous hearing?
No, you closed the hearing.
Oh, aren't we efficient? Wonderful. All right, very good. So, uh, uh, any other comments or questions, uh, by either you, Mr. Dash or Mr. Jenta?
No, thank you very much. Happy solstice.
Oh, yes.
Wonderful. So, uh, Alex, uh, if we can, uh, uh, with thanks, uh, replace. Our friends here back to attendee status while we bring in, uh, the, um, uh, participants for the public hearing. Uh, um. And this is a public hearing with respect to, and this is a major project. Site plan special permit hearing respecting, uh, special permit number two thousand five dash oh two. Uh, from Boston, uh, from Babson College. Uh, with respect to, uh, construction of a baseball batting, uh, building, um, to be located on, uh, Govani Field. And, uh, with that, uh, I think we were looking to bring over. Um, uh, Thomas Scarlett. Um. Steve Toley, Tim Powers and Jonathan Charwick. Is that right?
Yes.
And let's see. Uh.
Um, I don't not see, um. Mr. Toley, I think, um, Jonathan, I know you asked specifically about him, um. Do you know if he's here? Can you even take a look at the attendees list now that you're a panelist and let me know if you see an alias that I might not be noting?
Yep, let me take a quick look.
Thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't look like he may be on, which is fine. I think we can handle it, uh, without him in attendance.
Great. I'll keep an eye out if he, if he arrives and I, and I notice, I'll bring him right over.
Excellent. Before we begin the public hearing, um, uh, uh, and ask you to, uh, provide an introduction. Um, can I please have a motion to waive the notice of hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, Paul Alpert and a second by Jean McKnight. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Uh, Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair is, I, uh, we unanimously decided to, uh, waive the reading of the notice of hearing. Uh, uh, with that, um, I'd like to invite the participants from, uh, Babson College for a, a presentation up to ten minutes.
Great, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, Plating Board Members. Uh, my name is Jonathan Charwick from Activitas. I'm.
Great, thank you very much, uh Mr. Chairman, Plenum Board members. Uh my name is Jonathan Chalwick from Activitas. I'm a landscape architect and the project manager for the project. I'm also with Mr. Tom Scarlata from BH Plus A. Uh he's the architect on the project and then Tim Powers, who is the engineer on the project. Um if I can share my screen, I will give a short presentation explaining the project and then um hopefully open up to any questions and comments.
Please.
This is for um Babson College, uh Govoni Field located on uh Zero Olin Way. Uh for a point of reference on Great Plain Avenue uh going into Olin Way. It's in the northwest corner of the existing baseball. So a number of property lines and setbacks we are a need to respect. Uh first off, we have the Sudbury Aqueduct that uh goes directly through the middle of the field, so uh the proposed building will be located north of the Aqueduct. Um to note, uh there are currently two existing outdoor batting tunnels in this location, so the proposed project could really just to enclose. Uh existing condition in kind, obviously with some uh adjustments in layout. So as you can see, it's a uh exterior building uh with two batting tunnels. We have also included a men's and women's room. Um storage and a utility closet. Um in order to respect uh both setbacks and easements, we have a twenty-five foot. Side yard setback from the Aqueduct and also from the northern property line uh adjacent to Olin's property. So we fit the building within those two setbacks, and we also have in the northwest corner a drainage easement. Uh the property is owned by Babson College and the easement is for Olin College, so. Uh quite a number of setbacks that we've been able to fit the building uh within. Uh in order to do so, we've rotated the building slightly, which also adjusts the layout of the fence in the bullpen in the baseball field. Doesn't negatively affect the baseball players' play of uh space between the foul line and the fencing. And um for uh some additional information, we have filed an A and M permit with MWRA since we're crossing. Uh the Aqueduct for access to the facility. Um we have had the town's conservation commission review this and approve this administratively. And we did meet with the design review board uh a few Mondays ago and they approved our proposed sign permit. Um today, we've already received a comment from the town, from the Department of Public Works in reviewing um the capacity of a one inch. Of the entire previous area uh needs to be treated for recharge. Our pro- proposed design only includes a half inch, so we will modify the plan. To uh meet these recommendations, um and we believe they'll be adding a leachant base in order to meet that requirement. So we will uh based on their comments revise uh the plan to show that prior to a building permit being issued. Um at this point, I want to turn this over to Thomas Scarla. You can speak a little bit about the building and then uh turn it over to the planning board for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Jonathan. As Jonathan mentioned, it's a uh, it's a, it's covered, but yet an open structure. It measures ninety feet by forty-four feet in width. It accommodates two batting tunnels. Uh regulation size that would have portable mounds, and these are netted cages so that uh early spring weather. The teams can practice inside uh the covered tunnel if the fields are too wet. We have provided storage space and then two gender neutral toilets. Inside the building, the toilets also have outs- outside doors. So that the uh teams using the other fields can use these two toilets. Uh when the the uh the batting, the the varsity uh baseball team is not there. Uh it's a pre-engineered structure, so open with an open clear story metal roof. And we've used a uh corrugated vertical metal siding system. As the enclosure uh for the lower twelve and a half feet of the building. Next, Jonathan?
Sure.
So again, you're expressing the structure above. You'll see it, it was open and then it just had enclosed on the bottom. Um within, these are per- corrugated perforated metal panels. Uh with, you know, doors that would lead into the space for security purposes, but it is open. It's not used to walk uh third, we do have to provide. Uh exit signs and there's emergency lighting. We do have over the doors, we have a couple of cutoff lights. Direct above the doors and then there's lights inside. Uh but again, this is not gonna be a facility that they really can't get to it in the evenings. It's basically for daytime use. Next. I think that was it, Jonathan. Uh that was just a cutaway view of what is on the inside. Whether it's a uh artificial turf inside with suspended net cages. Uh at the at the batting tunnels, and also the cages can retract so they can use that for small, you know, short fielding exercises stretching. Inside the building. Okay, next. And, yeah, that's it.
Yep, I I just want to touch briefly on the utilities. I just want to go back to the overall site plan. Um so we are going to be pulling electric and water from um the baseball backstop area, so that also crosses over the Sudbury Aqueduct. And that's part of the application. And then we will also be tying the sewer system um in the northeast corner, moving east and north. Uh to tie into a system that's uh on the Olin property. We've had conversations with them and and their agreement of us uh tying into their system.
You've written agreement of that?
I I believe so between between Babson and Olin.
Okay.
Um Tim, anything else add on the utilities?
Uh nope, I haven't answered questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Great, uh so Mr. Chairman, that that ends uh our presentation for this evening, so I certainly turn it over to any questions or comments from either the the board or the public.
Thank you very much. Uh it certainly is a creative use of space and understandable, given that we live in New England to. Uh extend the season a little bit for practice. Um we do have uh um. We have received town comment from the design review board. Uh they uh they approved the building design. Um uh Chief Conlon from um. Uh uh from our fire department uh. Has uh has uh said he has no objection. Uh Chief Schlittler from the police department has said he has no issues. Concom has also approved this. Uh there was a a remaining. Uh comment from our town engineer, Tom Ryder. Who I think as you had mentioned, um uh John uh requested you change the. Um uh that uh um. Uh capacity from a half inch pipe to a one inch pipe, which you've committed to doing, so would like to see that in our. Decision and the revised plan reflecting that, but thank you for acknowledging the town's comment and your response to it. Uh proactively. Uh that is a list of our public comment. Uh I have, uh that is a list of our town comment. Um do we have any comments or questions? Uh from any members of the board? Jean McKnight?
Uh yes, I reviewed the material and um I just have one question to make sure I understand correctly. Is it true that all construction um is going to happen on land that already is? Um I guess I would call it hardscape or impervious so that the. Uh uh area of of the impervious. Ground cover area is not changing. Is that correct or is it changing somewhat?
I I would say it's changing slightly. This this area right now has existing bank tunnels and there's stoned dust in that in the area, so. Uh we're we're maybe removing a little bit of lawn area to make up for. Um a little bit of the space we're taking up in the baseball field, along with um just a little bit of stone dust we're providing to the access points, so. It's not a dramatic change. Like I said, mo- it's mostly impervious now. Um. But a a slight change and that and that's what we're addressing as far as the um the storm our management is concerned.
Okay, so um there is a slight change and it's being addressed. Okay, thank you.
Uh Natasha?
Just have a quick question. It it, did I read the the three D um image correctly in that it's open air? Or is it an enclosed building with mechanical?
It's it, it's open air. Uh so then the the little, the uh the toilet rooms, the storage rooms, those are small heated spaces. I mean, heated to the point where they're not gonna freeze, but they're not, this is not intended to be a year-round building.
Right, so there are no mechanicals or anything that could have acoustical implications or anything like that. Okay. That was my only question.
Uh Artie? Paul?
No, I'm not clear whether we mentioned this, but I think um. We need to have a copy of the agreement with Olin in the file.
Thank you, we did, but thank you for calling that out again, so we'll make that a a condition.
Yeah.
Uh or a finding. Um. Uh can we uh stop sharing the screen, please?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. We may ask you to share it again, but I just want to take this opportunity. To open this up to uh public uh comment. Uh at this time, I don't see anyone with. Uh their hand up to speak. Uh we'll give it another. Minute or so and then um. Move forward from there. We do have someone. Uh Sharon Daly. Uh Alex, if you could bring Sharon over, please, that would be helpful. Sharon, we can't see you. Uh if you can turn on your video, that would be helpful for us. And if you could turn on your audio. Very good. Hello, welcome. Can I please ask you to state your name and address for the record? And we're gonna ask people to limit their comments to three minutes of length, please.
Sharon Daly and it's thirty Curtis Road, Needham.
Great.
And I just have a quick question about the um new facility. Will it be locked when it's, you know, off hours, like not during games of practice?
I I would assume so. Uh we we haven't discussed that with with the college, but I I assume the 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 ideas is for um college use only. Um obviously, they'll be using when the baseball uh team is down there and then when other activities are down there, they'll probably allow the restrooms to be open. Uh for use, but my understanding would be when it's when it's off hours, they'll they'll probably lock it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Uh. Alex, if we could return Sharon back to attendee status, that's helpful. Any other comments or questions from the public? There were just another. Thirty seconds. I wish we had some kind of a music interlude for this period of time. I can ask my son, he's beginning violin lessons. I can do an excellent rendition of Star Wars, but. Until that time, um. Uh I don't see any other hands up from the public or anyone else calling in. Uh Alex, do you see anyone that I don't?
Don't see anyone.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh can I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
Second.
I have a motion by uh Artie Crocker and a second by Paul Alpert. He'd be just by a fraction of a hair, Jean. Um uh to close the hearing, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
And Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair is eye, uh the uh chair votes eye, we have unanimously decided to close the hearing. Um now, I uh can I have a motion? To grant the relief.
Um, Mr. Chair, I, this is a special permit, so I would prefer um that you just give me direction on what the decision should be. And I will, and I'll prepare it and you can sign it and vote it at your next meeting.
Okay, so I appreciate that. I think that we're looking to uh. Uh uh prove with the condition that we have um to our satisfaction. Uh an agreement with um with Olin College as we discussed. And um. Uh what were the additional?
I think was the planned modica- modification on the impervious calculation that the engineering department recommended.
So that's, yeah, to handle the pipe from half inch to one inch?
It's how, yes, it's how the impervious calculation is done, one inch over the structure of the impervious area. Yes.
I'm learning every time I'm here. I appreciate that. That's helpful. Uh do the uh members of the rest of the board have any other comments or conditions?
Do we want to have a condition that the building will be locked when not in use?
Yes. Thank you for raising.
Yes, I s- I suppose the um um that Sharon Daly uh, you know, was concerned about. Perhaps adolescents a- a- access to the building and um that it should be not a pu- uh not a. You know, inviting nuisance of some kind, so having that would be good.
Lee, are there any other conditions that you?
No, they'll just be our standard conditions about, you know, construction hours, et cetera. So I'll just, I'll flush it out with the normal conditions we would have for our new building construct- construction.
And you're so you're uh satisfied?
Yes, I'm satisfied that you've given me adequate direction to prepare it.
Okay, so we will uh take the vote, I guess, at our next meeting, although. That's gonna require a review of the decision. I know, we hope that there won't be any comments. Sometimes there is. So I. Uh. What's your timing like? Um. Uh Jonathan?
Um optimistically, we're gonna try to build sometime this fall into the winter. Um but we're, you know, now now with that, at least the hearing is closed this evening. I I have enough direction. I can at least talk with the school and figure out what our next steps are. Originally, that was the plan. Um but things are changing daily.
So I'm not gonna commit the board to voting the relief or the decision for July seven. We may intend to take it up on July seven, but. I'm not sure we'll necessarily have sufficient time to do that.
Lee, where we've closed the hearing, are we under a time constraint for when we?
You have, you have ninety days.
We're ninety days? I think we can meet that.
That we can do. And I would intend to do it, you know, I would tend to do it in short order. I don't intend to drag on, except. We do have another file in front of us that uh will require. Um what I probably intend to do, and I'll chat with you, Lee, is to have this on the agenda after the he- after the. Hearing is over. Uh and we can let uh Babson know of our plan and then. Uh if we can't get to it, if the hearing runs long, you'll have to forgive us and we will uh bring it back up. In short order, okay?
Okay. Mi- Mr. Chairman, when when's the next hearing after July seventh? Do you have that date yet? Ju- just like give them that information, so I'll follow.
Not, it's not necessarily a hearing. It'll be our next meeting, which will be uh.
I think it's August sixteenth. Is it the sixteenth? It's in August. We checked the date.
That's correct.
Thank you, Alex. So August sixteen, so. It should be dealt with uh by then.
Lee, is there any word yet on um? Whether we're gonna be able to have Zoom meetings in August or?
Uh no, the only way that we'll be able to continue with the a traditional Zoom meeting like this is if the govern- if the if the legislature acts to extend it. And.
And it still hasn't acted.
It hasn't acted yet, so right now it's July fifteenth.
July fifteenth, yeah. Okay, it was July first, but it's July fifteenth, okay.
Very good. Uh thank you uh very much, Jonathan, Tim, and. We had someone else, but I think uh Mr. Scarlett, but I think he has left us already. Um.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck with the project.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um. Next on our agenda is a de minimis change. For major project site plan special permit number two thousand and nine dash zero six. For the town of Needham in respect to some minor design changes to the proposed renovation for the town common. Uh I see that you have brought uh Chris Heap here. Hello, Chris. Thanks for joining us. Uh is there anyone else from your uh team that you are looking to participate?
Yes, uh Justin, I just saw him. Looks like he just came over as well.
Yes, good. So we have Justin. Justin, if you can turn, there's your video. Uh if you wanna unmute, uh Justin, can you test your audio?
Yep, can I?
We can. Excellent, very good. Uh thank you for your indulgence. Um. Chris, do you wanna uh give us a five-minute presentation?
Sure, uh or less. I think I can do that. Uh so this uh request for a de minimis change concerns the uh. Site plan approval for the town common renovation project that the planning board approved last December. There are two changes proposed to the site plans uh as a result, I think, of. The progression of the um site plans. The progression of the um site plans from permitting uh to construct actual construction documents. Um and those two changes are uh as follows. There's a shift from the. Prior use of exposed aggregate concrete on the walk- walking paths to uh to concrete pavers. Which are shown on uh some of the detailed sheets that be submitted with the request. Um and there is a also a reduction in the caliper. Of some of the trees shown on the planting plan, which is a result of, uh as I understand it. Both uh some value engineering uh intended to keep the project within uh. What has been appropriated by town meeting and also uh though the reduced caliper trees are are those that are available. Uh for immediate purchase and use in the project. Um so those are two, I think, I I think relatively minor changes. Um that we're looking for the board to approve as as a de minimis change.
Anything else you wish to add, Justin?
Um nope, that pretty much sums up what we're doing here.
Excellent. Uh I'll turn to members of the board, um except to say first. Before I do, I apologize. Uh with respect to town comments, we've received a note from DRB that they've approved. Uh the change of the design review board has approved the changes. Uh so with that, I'll come to members of the board. If you wish to say anything, if you wanna raise your hand, I see Jean. Go ahead.
Yes, um there was something said um in the application materials about a change in. The way the a crescent shape of of the sidewalk will meet um other hardscape. At the front near the town hall, I guess, or near the dr- near the um the driveway. Um it wasn't really clear to me what the change was. Uh could that be explained or shown?
Sure, I can uh, I believe I can.
You have permission to share a screen?
Yeah, if I can share a screen, I will um.
Cause that's like a third change in a way, isn't it?
It 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 s- sort of, although I think that is uh exceedingly de minimis. But and and I I I appreciate the question because I I confess I struggled with how to uh. Word that description in the in in the letter and I and I'm and I fear I didn't do. Um que- it's quite a good job as I could have. So can you see the the plan on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, so if you look here where I'm where I'm dragging the cursor. Where the walking path for the oval pathway throughout the common. Meets the entrance uh pathway from Garrity Way. On the prior um version of the site plan, the joiner of those two different forms of pavement. Was square. It was directly across in a straight line right there. At the request of the DRB. The the path of the oval walkway was extended in this curved uh orientation right here. So basically to preserve the 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 look of the oval. So that was where that was previously squared off, it is now. Curved to continue the oval path.
Thank you. That that's that's cl- clear now to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Artie?
My my question directly relates to the longevity. Of the new pavers that we're using related to the original design of the exposed concrete aggregate. Such very specific to be related to what is the light, what is the longevity of the two 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 materials? We're saving money, but what are we losing in longevity? And and I I don't, I don't foresee any issue with any cap aspect to it. Unless you put that's put in there as a sub-question, but my main. In question is longevity. I'd like an answer to that.
No, thank you, thank you. Um Artie, it it we're and it does remain. With the substitution in the materials, it remains fully accessible. Um and also, as I understand it, the new material is actually um. Easier to preserve in that it is, uh I believe, easier to repair, I believe, probably because you can replace. Uh a segment at a time without needing to actually repave or patch.
But that doesn't, I I can appreciate that possibility. Of, you know, patching a concrete square versus pulling a brick and putting a new one and something like that. But that doesn't really fully answer the question. So there's gonna be a subs- these these bricks are gonna be on a sub- subsurface. A- as as what we saw on the walking path that the Fazio field. That that has a, you know, after after twelve years, ten to twelve years, it needed to be surfacing. And the 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 life expectancy is technically twenty-five years. As we saw on the tennis courts. If if the tennis courts are not potentially maintained to preserve cracks. That the substrate may have, the whole things may have to be ripped out and replaced. So I go back to the mains, I go back to the question. The original con- the original pathway had a, let's call it, I'll use the phrase life expectancy. This new one has a life expectancy. I would like to understand what the difference is between them. I understand. There's gonna be maintenance in between, and I don't know exactly how that falls, but right now, my main life expectancy is what I'm asking.
Sure, and um I could speak to that. Um the material that is proposed for this is made for a high-traffic. Area. Um similar pavers are being used throughout the streetscapes and have held up. Um and if the initial exposed aggregate was used, all concrete inevitably is going to crack. And in other communities, if you look um at areas of Wellesley where you have exposed aggregate concrete. When that cracks and you have to patch it, it never really goes back the way it's intended to go. And visually, you see the difference in the end product. I don't know if that ex.
Oh well, I mean, yes, no, I can understand how there are cracks, they need to be fixed. Uh you could, I I mean, perhaps there's never stated life expectancy, but in some ways, I would think there would be some version of a life expectancy. Now, these pavers have a sub- of a substrate, they're being put on stone dust or something like that, they're being put on the substrate. What is the life expectancy of that? Because I state this because at the beginning, I was still talking about. The walking path at the Thazio that had a life expectancy, if it's not maintained correctly. The tennis courts have a life expectancy or or likely have a life expectancy, which may have to be ripped out and. That can be done after twelve years, since it was potentially not maintained correctly. So I go back to this this project here. What is the ex- what is the life expectancy of this system?
Install correctly, this system would have the same, if not exceed, the life expectancy of. Exposed aggregate concrete in the same place.
Which is what?
Um I could. Don't have an exact year number in front of me.
I I have a, I think what Artie's also asking is. What is the substrate? And when I'm looking here on your sheet number twelve is that it's a four-inch concrete base that's continuous. Is that correct? I I think that the the worry is that these things are gonna heave if they're not put on the right substrate, so we just wanna confirm. Is that right, Artie?
Yeah, that that's it's boiling down to that. Yes, it's, I mean, it's a four, so it's a four inch sub and concrete substrate. And I don't know if that would be the same substance, same four inch concrete substrate if it was a exposed aggregate on top of it. I'm not sure if it's the same subsurface or it's a different substrate.
I think, I think if it's on the concrete bay, on the four-inch concrete base, then there's less move, then there's. Less uh risk of it moving and creating a tripping hazard. But they just, I just, we just wanna confirm that you're still doing, that the concrete pavers are gonna be on a concrete base.
The the concrete pavers that are that are under the furniture, I know will have a concrete base. I don't believe it was going to be four inches concrete throughout the entire walking path. So it would then rely on the specified subsurface for the pavers, which is a compacted gravel uh base.
Cause you hear, you you have here on on sheet twelve, it's concrete paver sidewalk, so it's only in one specific location?
So if you go back, so the the curved inner walkways. On the common will have the um concrete pavers. The cast-in-place sidewalk is along the Garrity Way roadway where there's an ADA accessible ramp. At the entrance to the curve.
Are are you still sharing? We don't, we don't see your plan. Sorry.
No, I took it down. Um what she, what she, I I can if you, if you, if you'd like, what she, were you looking for?
Just just the the layout, right?
Okay. Yes, just the layout.
Wh- where do you not have concrete, a concrete sidewalk nor a concrete sub-bas, is I guess what we're trying to figure out?
It would be along the curved um curved areas of this walking path.
You have the oval.
At the entrances, so. So it's cast in place along Garrity Way where it meets the new entrance for the curve. For the um concrete pavers. Um and there wouldn't be an entire concrete subsurface under the circular path around the common. Um or the small connecting paths to the corners. Anywhere that's going to have furniture where the shade structures are, um any of the walls, those all have concrete foundations there.
So what is under the oval path? What are you proposing to put under the oval path? Pathway, you're calling a circle, but it's probably oval.
Yeah, sorry, the ellipse um shaped path.
What is under the subs- what's the subsurface there?
That will be compacted gravel and piece on for the specifications of the ideal block pavers.
And that's where you used to have the the concrete sidewalk?
That's what had originally had exposed aggregate concrete.
So so my my concern is that things are gonna start shifting and that you're gonna end up having a lot of tripping hazards. Like you see on, you know, the the tree roots, different things that are gonna be happening. I I just. I feel like it's not, it doesn't have the longevity that concrete does or that pavers with a concrete um substrate have.
So the perimeter of the entire walkway will have a set um border. Course that will be set into concrete. So. Basically, the body between the border course of the walkways wouldn't have the. Force of concrete over the entire surface.
But the but the walkway doesn't have it, just the border.
Keep would, yes, to keep.
So that, so that doesn't matter. That really doesn't, I I would, I would, I think, I think, isn't it fair to say that that really? Has minimal effect on the actual walkway then? Isn't that fair? Is that fair to say? You know, minimal effect on the structure of the walkway itself.
I would say, I mean, it keeps the walkway in place, but if the surface. Of the walkway is prepared for the specification of the materials, there shouldn't be any issues with movement in the pave- pavers.
And is it, and the uh Chris, the town uh. Uh would recognize any liability it would have if there was. A tripping hazard as a result of an unsettled portion. And it wa- is it true that it would move forthwith to um. Uh replace that piece or do what's necessary to remove that tripping hazard?
I think it's fair to say that um this, you. You know, is an important piece of public property right on the literal doorstep of town hall. I I I think. To the extent anything gets exposed or heaved or becomes a tripping hazard. Yeah, I think everybody can can expect that the town will will move very quickly to address that problem.
So I think what we really have before us is first. A decision by us whether or not these two changes really reflected de minimis change or not. And uh. You know, that's the first question. Artie, does this, you know, are these changes de minimis to you?
Well, I'm part of my my comments coming from, you know, what I can, let's say, what I can see the public foresee.
I understand, I understand, but the question is, is this de minimis? Is this de minimis change? That's the question.
Well, the change is being made purely for financial reasons. It's not being made. It's not being made to. It's not being made for any other reason, period. That that's really why the change is being made to save money. Now, it's something, now it's something certain why that's why that's being done. I appreciate that fact, why that's being done. But it's been been mon- being done to save money. I don't know how much money we're talking about. Um how would that affect my decision if I knew props, sorry, that shouldn't be a factor at all, but that's why it's being made.
So notwithstanding, notwithstanding that rationale, I go back to the question, Jean will come to you after, but. The question is, is this a de minimis change? If you're saying it's not, then we'll take a different path if that's how the board decides. But right now, that's the question, I think, in front of the board.
I can't, I don't know, Adam, I I. I don't know, in my mind, part of my mind says no, because I I have concern of, I have some some concerns about the longevity. As it's been done or why it's been done, so I don't know.
Jean, that her hand raised, I'd like to hear.
Yes, I I wanted to be make made clear, what is the difference between? A a determination that this, is it de minimis change or a alternatively? Um that it requires an application for an amendment to the site plan that will require a public hearing. Um and um. I recall the public hearing and the comments that were made by the public. Um and uh I, it seems to me that to go through the um process of. Having a public hearing so that the public can have input into the change in paving materials. Um and the caliper of the trees is really unnecessary. And I'm prepared to determine that these requested changes are de minimis.
Thank you. I would like to hear from Natasha because she's the architect and. Uh I'd like her opinion as to, I mean, a- as far as changing the caliper of the trees, I I think. That's a de minimis change, but the question is whether just changing the type of paving. Is it a de minimis change or requires a full hearing?
I agree that the caliper of the trees is is some something that is de minimis, but I'm concerned about. Um not having the right substrate and then when there's plowing, there's other stuff, these things come up. If they're not, if they're not installed properly. Um and I'm assuming. Um that this is gonna be, it's a, you know, it's public bidding process. Um so I'm just. I'm I'm worried that we're gonna have something that will need repair sooner than later. I don't know if what kind of a change that is. It it seems more significant to me than the trees.
Chris?
Um you just to the to the question of whether this is a de minimis change or not, um I would just. Highlight that the the layout of the walkway is staying identical. The layout of the of common overall is remaining exactly the same. Um there's no changes to the site plan itself. Um I don't, I I don't think I recall. Any real discussion during the original, I think, three nights of public hearing on this application. Um any discussion of the of the of the materials used for the walkway. Um and I think if the board were inclined to include a condition that. You know, the the new pavers need to be installed to manufacture specifications. Uh you know, I think we're gonna do that anyway, so I don't think it would um. Certainly wouldn't be objectionable to to the board in any way, but I think. Given the combination of the absence of any changes to the site plan itself in terms of the layout. Um our need to install it to ma- to manufacture spec and, you know, what I can attest will be the town's. Um uh strong desire to keep this walkable in all conditions at all points in the future. I guess I I I I I don't wanna minimize the concern, but I think it 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 is something that will be addressed. As a matter of course, um no matter what.
If Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Artie.
And and um not to push it back against what you're saying, Chris. Um there were perhaps no comments about the walkway because they knew it was a solid concrete structure. Um, there were perhaps no comments about the walkway because they knew it was a solid concrete structure, solid aggregate and, and there was of no concern if it was something other, if they were talking about essentially brick pavers visually. Let's say, I would say there would start to be some other comments. Do I want this to be another public hearing? No, no, I don't. I don't want there to, to go through that.
So with that, then I'm gonna come.
But I also don't want this to, a year from now or two years after it's done, to start getting into something which people are start are seeing some, something that's lacking from what they originally thought was going to be. We're spending millions of dollars, millions of dollars on this. Or whatever the final figure is gonna be and people are gonna see this and if it's something other than what they thought as far as longevity, there's gonna be criticism, there's gonna be criticisms and concerns.
I think there's also criticism already that, you know, could be said to be had. You know, if it was uh, aggregate concrete and it was, you know, um, and it was maintained on a schedule that's less than robust that perhaps some would like.
Well, that's, that's not a fair, that's not, I mean, that's, that's not a fair comparison. You can say that about every single thing going on. We're talking about, we're talking about something where the, the, the odds of issues are increased with what the change is.
Nevertheless, nevertheless, the, you know, if what is the, what recourse, um, Natasha will come to you in a second. Uh, Lee, uh, in the case of a de minimis change where it seems we have consensus to vote this as de minimis change. Can we register these comments formally with the select board?
You can put conditions in your de minimis change to address the, you know. You can certainly write a letter to the select board, but you can also address it, you know, head on in, in, in the decision that you drafted, that you draft.
Okay, so which, we're not gonna, but we would give you direction tonight on how to draft that uh, decision, is that correct? Or would we?
I think, I think, I think that's, I think that's how we should proceed on this application, yes.
Okay, Natasha?
I'm not concerned about the pavers. I'm concerned about the installation and the substrate part of it. And so I think that um, I, I think what, what Artie's saying is, is right. I mean, you're getting a, you're getting a less expensive installation um, because we're trying to save costs and I understand that aspect of it, but what is the warranty of it? And not only that, but just in general. You know, a lot of towns require a concrete substrate for pavers or for bricks or for whatever their standard is because they move and the trees will, the roots will make them move and other things will make them move and plows will kick them out. So I'm just, I'm just bringing it up that there's a durability issue of the installation that, that most likely will occur. Um, the question is, is, you know, is the saving significant enough to, to warrant it?
So um, are you proposing to condition the, this, that it be aggregate concrete? Or, or as an alternative, leave it with, I think Lee and Chris with the permanent public building commission to ensure that this is installed adequately and with DPW that it's maintained adequately.
So is this, is this in the purview of PPBC?
Who manages this constructionally? Or Chris?
I think it's, I think it's being done through the DPW. This is not part, this is not public facilities.
And DPW doesn't have concerns?
Uh, DPW doesn't have any concerns. We came to this um, determination after working with Beta who is working on the original design and with um, MJ Cataldo who is going to be installing the product. Um, and as far as it was part of a value engineering um, uh, process, but it wasn't the cheapest alternative. Um, if it, if it was to just cut costs, you could go with a broom swept concrete for the entire walkway surface, but that in turn we felt was sliding the public of really what the town common should look like aesthetically and to use pavers in lieu of just going with the uh, broom swept concrete that we know inevitably we would have, there's going to be cracks, there's going to be patches in the future. And at the end of the day, when that time comes with a paver subsurface, we can address that more aesthetically and still give the public a higher quality product than just the broom swept concrete on the town common.
Mr. Chair, do we actually know what the cost difference was between them? I think, I actually think that's a fair question to ask.
I don't have a.
By going. Um, I can share briefly, but by going with just exposed aggregate or a broom swept concrete surface.
Well, staying with the original plan versus this plan. I think it's a fair question.
The savings on pavers um, versus the initial exposed aggregate concrete was roughly twenty-three thousand dollars.
That was it? That's it, twenty-three thousand dollars? So we're talking that, we're talking twenty-three thousand dollar different savings by change, by making this change? Just to confirm.
Okay.
Yes.
I agree. That seems really low for, for, for a big difference and, and. But I guess how, are, in, in the overall project, or how? How over budget were we?
It was much needed VE in order to move forward with the project with the appropriated funds for the town common.
Yes, Jean.
The twenty-three thousand dollars brought us within the budget?
Well, that along with other VE items.
But, 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 but.
Jean had her hand up.
I, I just wanna try to get to the point of, of making a decision. And it seems as though there's two ways we could go with this with regard to the request for different hardscape material for the walkways. We can deny that request, in which case the original, whatever was originally approved, just what would have to be done. Or we can allow um, the applicant to use one of two approaches, either the original proposed hardscape material for the walkways or the concrete pavers with, and I hope I'm using the right words, Natasha, correct me if I'm not, oh, with the, uh, the concrete base that will uh, um, preserve the uh, concrete walkway. Yeah, that's, so give the applicant the choice then. They can do the original one or the concrete pavers as long as they have the, the concrete base.
Chris?
Or deny it. Well, I think that's what's before us and I just wanna kind of wrap this up.
In terms of, Jean, in terms of the, the, the options you just laid out, your first one was to deny the request. Your second was to let us use the original hard skipping. I think those two are functionally the same, uh, if you.
No, but also you have a choice. You can use the concrete pavers provided you put the, the superior base for the concrete pavers um, that Natasha Espada uh, has discussed.
Respectfully, what we have proposed to do is switch the hardscape material, install it to the manufacturer's specification and assure the board that it will remain maintained and walkable in all conditions. If, if, if something goes awry, we will fix it. Um, we don't want anybody tripping or falling or incurring liability on the doorstep of town hall. Um, I, I am concerned about the idea of re-engineering um, the installation in a way that departs from manufacturer's specification on the fly during a meeting. Um, I, I, you know, with the assurances that we're gonna do it as required by the manufacturer and maintain it going forward. Um, I, I, I respectfully struggle to see um, you know, what the concern is going forward. Um, that will cause the board to deny the, the request for de minimis change.
Yeah, well, I just wanna find out if the other board members are satisfied with that condition and if everybody is, then we can go forward um, with that condition, uh, as Christopher Heap described it.
Sorry, Paul, one second.
Can, but I hear from Natasha on this.
I, I understand, but Artie had his hand up. I'm recognizing Artie. All right. Artie?
I was just gonna state that uh, no, no doubt the manufacturers, the manufacturer has multiple options that they've seen and, and can approve in a concrete substrate like, very likely has been used with this product before. And so that can likely be approved without any issues at all. I understand the concern of financial concern. But I think we have a legitimate concern here as far as longevity. And I can appreciate, you know, of course, I appreciate the statements as far as making sure it's walkable. Um, but I think we wanna make sure it's walkable. It, it stays intact without having to worry about spending time.
Natasha?
I think we're.
So I, I, I understand what you're saying, Chris. I, I understand what you're saying, that they're gonna build it per the specifications. And, and I, and I, I respect that, but the issue is that within a certain amount of time and with, after the warranty is gone, these things start shifting if they're not on something really solid. So, so I think that for, and I, and I don't know the overall budget of the project. I don't know if this is, you know. I, I assume that this, you know, that twenty-three thousand is, is gonna throw up. I don't know, I don't know what the budget of the project is and I don't know what percentage it is. I, 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 public projects in general don't get repaired as easily as private projects or, or um, and, and usually you wanna build them well so that they last a long time. So my recommendation would be to I, I think it will cost more to do the pavers with the substrate underneath it. So my recommendation would be to, 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 to be play it safe and, and, and do the the concrete with the aggregate that will be longer lasting for the town and will need very little repair if any um, in the next, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm not ten, twenty years versus something where even though it's installed properly um, in the long term, there's more room for it to fail. And so, and then usually we don't have the funds in town to repair or, you know, so that that's I, and I, and I respect that you're trying to save money and maybe it's a deal breaker if we don't do it. So I guess that's my question is are there any other, any other items that could be reviewed for VE? That, 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 you know, could be phased or something so that we don't lose the integrity of, of those walkways in the, for the future?
Paul, uh, but before I come to you, Paul, uh, Chris, did you wanna respond to Natasha?
There can, a, as a practical matter, we're gonna maintain the walkway in a way that's not gonna create a lot, you know, liability in, in, in this area. I, I guess if there's a, if you wanna include a condition that says, you know, the, the oval walkway needs to be maintained in good repair, um, you know, in all weather conditions at all times, um, you know, that'll put I think some pressure on us to, you know, hear your comments and consider them. Uh, but allow us to, it, you know, if we so elect, continue to move forward with the project with the, with the preferred material that we've, that we have selected. Um, I think that you know, uh, uh, accomplishes the result that you're looking for, um, without uh, requiring us to, I think figure out the substrate in the meeting this evening, um. You, you know, and allows us to move forward with, 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 with the request, I mean.
And I feel comfortable with that. I, I don't, I mean, I feel comfortable with that, but there has to be a condition that you review it and, and do the pros and cons of it because it could be that, you know, it, it, it's a short dollars for, for, you know, I think for more longevity.
Artie, before I come to you, I'm gonna uh, come to Paul and let his hand up first, Paul.
Okay. My first reaction is, is the twenty-three thousand dollars for this project is not a lot of money to be over budget. And I understand the time constraints, so uh, given the time constraints, you don't want to lose the time of having to go to town meeting to get the additional twenty-three thousand dollars because they're not gonna meet until the end of October. But there may be a way to get the twenty-three thousand dollars, or at least in the short term, from the finance committee. Because there is a mechanism for that, you know, we're not talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars here, we're talking twenty-three thousand dollars. And with all due respect, to say that we're gonna obligate the town to keep this in good repair. You know, something happens and the town says, yeah, we have to keep it in good repair, but we don't have it in the budget. We don't have the money to keep it in good repair. Towns have that problem all the time. A, and um, you know, I'm, I'm hearing Natasha saying uh, we're being penny wise and pound foolish. What I'm hearing. And, and, and uh, I think, I think maybe you guys need to go back to the drawing board and find a way to uh, raise this twenty-three thousand dollars some, somewhere else.
Can I just respond to that?
Yes.
I have respectfully not heard any objection to the appearance of the proposed pavers that we're, we're looking to, to install. I mean, the the, the pavers themselves are not an issue that I've heard. All I've heard is that these substitute material over the long term runs a higher risk of failing sooner. The town as property owner is obligated to maintain its property. It, it will, with the new material, maintain it in a walkable condition.
With all due respect, Chris, I see a lot of things around this town that are not being maintained properly. And I'm gonna say specifically, which is, you know, some, something dear to the heart of a lot of town citizens. A lot of our playing fields go for years and years and years before the money is raised to maintain them. I, I, I can't buy that argument. The town finds ways of deferring maintenance until the absolute last minute. That's what towns do. I'm sorry, I'm not buying your argument.
We, well.
However, I'm, I, I think I'm hearing you saying that we're going out of our purview of
De minimis changed, de minimis changed.
Well, the minimalist change, the minimalist change just means we're deferring it to, to a public hearing. And I don't know that that's gonna change our discussion.
I, I, for my part, representing the applicant, I do not believe the change in material from exposed aggregate concrete, concrete pavers runs afoul of any of your site plan review criteria contained in your zoning pilot.
Okay.
Artie?
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with Paul that. Um, you know, I respect what you're saying, Chris, very much. And I, 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 I respect, I believe that you believe that and so forth. But it's, but it doesn't exactly always happen that way. I also, I also believe that the visually there is a big difference in when, when, when the public, when the town meeting saw this, when the public saw this, they saw the exposed aggregate. They saw visually what it looked like. We're talking about a visual difference. And there, there is a sophistication, sophisticated difference between the two. And there is, there is in fact a longevity difference between the two. In fact, the other one will last longer. It will require a much less maintenance over time. We're talking short, we're talking whatever amount it was, twenty-three thousand dollars. We're talking very short money between the two. It doesn't, it does not make it from a, from a town, from person living in the town, whether on the planning board or not, that makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Yeah, but Artie, Artie, we do have a problem, if I may, Mr. Chair. We do have a problem in that if we're over budget, the town may not be able to get started on this project until the funds have been made available in one form or another. I would like to ask Lee Newman uh, the question of whe- whether um, we are going beyond our authority under site plan review. If what we're really talking about is, is, is the uh, uh, longevity. uh, longevity issue, you know, you know, the 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 costs and the maintenance versus, um, be 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 because actually pavers may may actually look better than, you know, and Natasha's nodding, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you. The pavers look better and it's not the, I wish we had the pavers with the concrete under it. So that's the issue is that the installation. Even if it meets the installations of the of a paver. Unless you have the su- the concrete, it's always gonna heave. You're gonna get water in there when the dust comes out, when the stone dust, so. It the the pavers are nicer. It's just a matter of that they're gonna require more maintenance if it doesn't have the right substrate.
And so, but it sounds like they're not gonna get the twenty three thousand dollar savings if we require that.
And I I've never known one piece of concrete that has for twenty five years or ten years, you know, in itself. You know, not shifted with, uh, with, I'm not an engineer. I don't play one on TV. I don't know what the substrate is on I rock or my driveway, but I can tell you as a cyclist. I certainly trip over lots of pieces of broken asphalt. Because, uh, and dry and, uh, you know, on our street.
Salt gets to it or something. I'm not saying, there's nothing that's bulletproof. Yeah.
I want to get to a point where we are within the bounds of the application in front of us for the de minimis change. Uh, and and whether or not Lee has enough direction and we can give her direction with these conditions that we've discussed. We can vote those conditions. We can just acknowledge those conditions. I think it's it's gonna be an imperfect solution. I think there's gonna be wear, tear and maintenance from the, uh, on both, uh, concrete pavers, which like you, Natasha, I agree aesthetically, look nicer than a long chunk of payment pavement. Um, and pavement too will also have its own maintenance issues. Yes, it's true, Paul, that there are parts of where around the town on, uh, various town buildings. I see it with my son. I play with him on our town grounds. I taught him to ride his bicycle on Newman. But you know what, Paul? He never once tripped and tripped on his bicycle. A new, uh, on the Newman's pavement. And I do think that, given this is the entryway to town government. That they would do it, I would expect the town to do a more meticulous job here if nowhere else on the on the maintenance. But setting that aside. Are we gonna impose conditions? Lee, are you? Are you clear on what we want? Very good. So I'm just responding to what Paul had asked before. I recognize Jean McKnight.
But I want to go back to say that Paul's question to Lee was not answered because uh, others were allowed to speak. So, um, first, that question should be answered. Then I just want to give us a strategy here for going forward for making a decision. We first need to make the decision of whether, and I would, I say there are three changes that are being, uh, asked for. One is the, um, tree caliper, the other is the minor change in, uh, the shape of the, um, uh, of the intersection of the, uh, oval walkway and the walk from, um, from the driveway. And then the third is the change in the material. So I propose this, that we determine first of all that all three of those changes are de minimis changes. Make that decision. Then treat each requested change separately. Vote on the trees, we'll run the change in the, uh, minor minor change in the, uh, in the design of the, um, oval where it meets the the other walkway and then the the co- the change to concrete pavers as requested with the, um, condition about, uh, installed to manufacturer specifications and maintaining good repair at all weather at all times. And that we 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 vote on it. We're just talking and talking and it's time for.
I agree. Thank you.
I I agree that we need to get Lee's answer to the question about whether what discussing goes beyond our authority under site plan review.
Lee's Lee's not quite sure of the answer. We we would say.
Then I suggest you consult with town council.
I was about to say that.
Do in this case, unfortunately. I would say, you know, in the past, you know, um, if 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 a developer was gonna install something and we would not, we would not be in the weeds like this. Um, if, you know, if their project failed, it would be on them. Um, and certainly if the town had no problem with the way the utilities were being done, um, we would have no problem. And here's the town is no problem with what's with what's being proposed, but.
So, so Chris, do you want to answer Paul's question? As a starting point, and then I think for the board, you know, it sounds like Jean has made a pretty decent motion, at least on the, uh, determination of the de minimis change, and then we can vote specifically after. So Chris. What say you?
So I I I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Um, I will, I will, I will say that. But I do think, uh, you know, no matter what hat I'm wearing, I do think that, you know, the change in materials. Where I think I will, I've heard that visually. You know, the one we're proposing to substitute in tonight, uh, may even look better. And where the only question is one of longevity. There is no impact here within the purview of your site plan approval criteria. Um, that would enable you to to, you know, to to deny the request. Again, it it's a, it's a substitute material. It is one that, or at least arguably, is a visual improvement. And which the applicant has represented will be maintained, um, in a safe, passable, walkable condition at all times. Um, with with those. All of those comments lined up, you know, I would respectfully request that you approve the change.
Artie?
Um, I I believe I heard, um, Natasha made some comment that other towns are actually laying these papers on top of a concrete substrate as opposed to a compacted, um, stone dust and gravel substrate for the specific reason of longevity. So I would argue that Paul, this is not, this is not necessarily a question that Natasha has stated, Mr. Chair. So I would I would say that there is, there is precedent. I would use the word precedent of knowledge that there is a difference between how this material is laid and for longevity, and there is reason for concern.
Artie, we don't, we don't have the tech specs in front of us. Uh, the material being used and the installation procedures that are devised by an engineer. And it's impossible for us at this time to determine and compare that with the installation of similar, if not the same, pavers with another municipality, what those tech specs are.
I I I I would just, I would, I would disagree in the sense that if someone on the, no, someone on the board has experience of what's been using, I mean, that's why we have diversity on the board. If someone on the board has experience of what's been happening other towns, then we in fact have sometimes have some knowledge base to go on. So just, you know, because remember the town is the town, the applicant is coming to us to save money. It's, it wasn't their first choice. It's not their first choice. Their first choice was the other.
If you, if you're able to prejudge the members of the design review board and the select board and the re- and all of DPW that devised the plan from then until now. Then I, you know, I would like for you to pick my Super Bowl picks for the next season.
It's a simple, it's a simple statement, Mr. Chair. It's a simple statement that this was done to save money. It wasn't, it was not, it is not the first choice. It was done to save money. That's a, that's a, that's a very specific fact. It was done to save money, not because it was a choice of, oh, we made a mistake. We actually liked the other one better. It was designed. It was, it was a valued engineer to save money. And so I can appreciate that fact. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that it was not a valued engineer.
I'm not, let's not get in the weeds here. This has gone on long enough. I understand your position. Uh, Chris will come to you in a second. I think that we're here now to make a decision. We've been discussing this for fifty minutes. And, uh, you can certainly vote, you know, as each of us members of the of the board are entitled to do. Uh, but we need to come to, you know, come to a motion. First, though, I'm gonna recognize Chris.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just a couple of comments quick and quickly in response. Um, you know, I I I think I, and the applicant appreciate Natasha's comment that this other towns may be do handling the, uh, substrate differently than what is proposed on the site plans. And I think informally, we will, I think, listen to that comment and I and 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 give it some thought going forward, although I, having said that, we will, we we will, you know, appreciate that comment and and think about it. It doesn't change the nature of our request or the timing of our request, given that I think we need to move forward with this um, as quickly as as possible. There is a desire to get this project moving imminently. In terms of Artie's follow-up question to Natasha's comment. You know, I would just point out that to the extent other towns are doing something, that that doesn't in the absence of a regulation on the books in town, that does not provide a precedent for for the way we need to do things here. You know, we 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 will comply with all the bylaws, all the regulations that we that we need to. But i- you know, th- there is a difference, th- there may be a difference in terms of the the law and the regulation that the board is applying in site plan review. So I just wanted to flag those those two things. And and finally, you know, the the applicant that is coming before the board. Having considered alternatives and coming up with this request that is before you now. Is the town's DPW, uh, the very same, uh, entity that the planning board would often turn to for advice on exactly this kind of, uh, you know, engineering-based question. So I just want to, you know, reemphasize that this is the 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 same entity that is devoted considerable thought to this and come up with this as the solution is is the town's DPW. Paul?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was originally going to request that you not ask us to vote in alphabetical order because I wanted to hear how Natasha and Jean were going to vote before I made up my my mind, but I've decided that I've made up my mind. Um, I'm going to, um, go with what Chris wants to do because this is a project that, um, cannot, I don't think can wait until special town meeting for them to get an additional twenty three thousand dollars from town meeting. I don't know whether the finance committee would give them the money. Um, I appreciate Chris's representations that we can put into our decision. Um, I would like the town to consider Natasha's suggestion about the substrata and see if they can do that within within budget. If at all possible, you know, m- m- maybe find somewhere else to cut some money, but y- you know. See if that can be done and still be able to go forward on the timing. That's where I've decided to come down on my vote.
Thank you. Natasha, you've been called upon indirectly, but.
My name's all over the this. I I just, so let me just, let me just, I I I am sensitive to the fact that this needs to move forward. I'm also sensitive to the fact that if if, you know, a year from now or two years from now, these things move. Um, and it causes a a mass access, you know, accessibility issue for people to be able to move through it. That's why you have the substrate and all the sidewalks surrounding it, right? But you just don't have it in the middle because of cost-cutting measure. And I, if DPW is 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 okay with making sure that they repair any anything that, um, you know, i- if there is a budget, ju- like similar to what Paul was saying, if there is enough budget as an alternate to to make it a a stronger, uh, installation. I would, I would prefer that, but if not, could DPW just ensure that if there is movement in these things and it creates a hazard for accessibility and universal design, that it's addressed um, quickly, um, and that we don't, it it doesn't become something that never gets addressed and and it's not universally being able to be used by the entire town.
Uh, Jean, before I come to you, I don't know if Justin, uh, you or Chris wanted to respond to Natasha's succinct and, uh, point.
Uh, sure. Well, I'll just say that, um, as the DPW and working with the town as a whole for this project. We're going to maintain the front yard of the town to the highest possible standard, which we would any other area of town. Um, in my personal professional experience, put installing different materials. I could say that the concrete will fail and have notice, need noticeable repairs sooner than the paper if installed properly. And as a project manager on the project, I intend to ensure that all the products are installed per manufacturer specifications and hold our contractors accountable for it.
So with that, uh, Jean, did you want?
Um, I move that the change is proposed by the town as applicant to the site plan approved by the planning board for renovation of the town common. As provided in the special permit amendment granted, and then insert the date. Are determined to be de minimis.
We have a motion by Jean and a second by Paul Alpert. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote, uh, in alphabetical order. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And, uh, the chair votes aye. Now, Jean, do you have a motion on each of the individual items?
Yes. Um, I move that the proposed, uh, change in the caliper of trees. Um, to be smaller caliper as compared with those, um, approved in the site plan, uh, part, which was part of the, um, special permit amendment. Um, be approved by this board. That change be approved by this board.
Second.
We have a motion by Jean McKnight, a second by Paul Alpert. Do you have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Uh, the chair votes aye. Jean.
Then I have, um, I have a second motion, and this is that the minor change to the dimensions of the, um, oval shaped, um, walkway where it meets the walkway from gravity way. As compared with what was shown on the site plan approved in the special permit amendment. Uh, be approved by this board.
Second.
We have a motion by Jean McKnight, a second by Paul Alpert. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Uh, the chair votes aye. I will just say for the person who's delivering our minutes or preparing our minutes. Jean, you just said the second motion. I think you meant the third motion because our first motion was on the overall nature of a de minimis change.
Yes, um, thank you for that correction. Uh, so we we now have had three motions made, seconded and approved. So I'm going to boldly make this fourth motion. Um, and if it's not approved, um, then perhaps another member will make a different motion. Um, but I move that the change proposed by the applicant um, in the composition of the, um, paving material for the, um, oval walkway of from the, um, exposed aggregate concrete um, to, um, concrete, uh, pa- pavers be approved by this board with the condition that the concrete pavers will be installed to manufacturer's specifications and maintained in good repair in safe, passable, walkable. and maintained in good repair, in safe, passable, walkable condition at all times.
Sounds good. I second that motion.
We have a motion by Jean McKnight, second by Paul Alpert. Any discussion?
Yes.
I recognize Artie.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, um, I, you know, I mean, I appreciate what the town is trying to do. I don't believe those conditions would mean anything. It doesn't mean that anyone's going to intentionally ignore them or anything like that. I just don't think they'll carry much weight. They've heard what we said. Everything that we do in town, we want to maintain to a higher level. Right? Perhaps, perhaps, you know, from not so distant in the past, we were being a little bit more verbal about making sure things are maintained. I know on the CPC committee, where we made statements about that, because if we're bringing money towards it, we want things to be maintained. I don't think it'll carry much weight as far as what actually is going to happen over time with the pavers and then, and then in any, uh, additional. And I also, um, wanted to state that, um, I think it's okay that we vote differently. We don't always, we don't always have to vote, you know, the same, you know, you know, five to zero or anything like that. It's not, it's not necessary to be a, to be a well-functioning board. It's not necessary. We don't always have to be voting all the same way. It's, it's okay. And I, and I, at this point, I
Very good. Paul?
Um, gi- given what Artie just said, I have one question, which is whether we can, whether this requires a majority vote or a supermajority vote. And second, in response to what Artie said, I feel that, um, uh, when, when you have a condition that, um, uh, if it's not met, they're in violation of our permit, that carries a little bit. It, it carries a lot more weight than, than just, you, you know, the, the town is going to maintain what the town has to maintain. So, you know, probably putting, putting it into the special permit, I, I think does, does add some, some way to a town manager's thinking.
I mean, I can appreciate if it was a us to a private company. I just, in all honesty, I just don't know what matters between us and the town. What kind?
I understand you're welcome to, you know, to disagree, and yet we do have a motion on the floor. Uh, and a second, uh, is there any further discussion on the motion, Natasha?
I, I'm, um, from what Jean said regarding, uh, I don't know, I can't remember, Jean, what you said at the end, the last couple of words, but can we just add to that? Um, you know, to meet standards of universal design, so that, you know, you basically make it walkable per universal design.
Um, I'm, I'm willing to accept that change, uh, to the condition. Um, and so it would say will be installed to manufacturer's specifications. And or would those words su- substitute for manufacturer's specifications?
No, it would, you, the, after that, you said, and to meet the requirements of, you had something to the effect of walkways, you know, acceptable walkways.
I, I, what I, what I said is, um, the concrete papers will be installed to manufacturer's specifications and maintained in good repair in safe, passable, walkable condition at all times.
Right, to meet conditions of universal design, because that's what the Mass Access Board requires.
To meet conditions.
Of universal design.
Of universal design. Before I say yes, let's just add that to my motion, um, I'd like to ask, um, the applicant, uh, Mr. Heap, whether, um, those, uh, conditions, um, uh, can reasonably met, be met by the town.
I, unless Justin jumps in and tells me I'm misspeaking, I think that, I think that the condition as you, as you, uh, articulated it is, is perfectly fine.
All right, then, uh, with that change, uh, I, I make that change to the, to my original motion. Um, does the change need to be seconded again?
And I will second that change.
So we really have an amendment to Jean's initial motion that has been moved by Jean, seconded by Paul. Any discussion, uh, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll come to the vote on the amendment itself. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we have a revised main motion.
Like a town moderator.
Uh, as a result of our recent, um, uh, amendment. And, uh, do we have any further discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Uh, Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The vote is four to one on Jean's fifth motion.
Okay. Then I think we're, we're ready of the, the decision has to be written up. Is that correctly?
Yes, I'll write the decision for your consideration at the next planning board meeting.
Chris, you have your live debate.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Justin, thank you for your technical es- expertise and also to, you know, to, you know, both to Artie and to Natasha. For raising, you know, for raising the question, where it's in all of our interest to ensure that the town, you know, installs something that's gonna, uh, you know, that can be well-maintained and that, uh, will have universal access. So I'm glad that we were able to resolve these issues. Uh, Nat- um, uh, Lee, do you need any further direction from us on this matter?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Uh, I declare this item disposed of and, uh, Justin and, uh, Chris, thank you for your patience and staying with us.
Thank you all.
Nine thirty tonight. Now, uh, comes, uh, the parking determination for, uh, Sierra, um, Naturals. Uh, are we able to bring it? I don't know if Bob Smart is with us and Scott Thornton, Alex.
No, I think it's just the, uh, engineer is present. Bob, Bob, Bob will not be present.
Okay. And is that Scott?
Yes.
All right. Scott, I appreciate your mobile office.
It's all good. I, and, uh, I apologize. I had a, a meeting in Cambridge earlier and, uh, jumped out of that to get into this. Um, so anyway, here we are. Um, so I, I guess, uh, given the hour, um, I, we have a, I, I prepared a letter dated June seventh that discusses the, some operational changes that Sierra Naturals is, uh, is interested in implementing. Um, I had, I, I was prepared to give a summary of that, but, but I noticed that, uh, Tom Ryder submitted a, a letter of June sixteenth. Um, and I think that that, that letter summarizes, uh, summarizes where we, where we are. So I would, I would just be available for any questions, um, if you have any. And also I think we have some representatives from Sierra. I think Gretchen McCarthy is here, uh, from Sierra, if you have any other questions.
So just, uh, just for review, and I appreciate that very efficient, uh, summary, Scott. Uh, this is a parking determination as a result of the following changes to the business. Um, that, uh, you'll increase the, that the applicant will increase the number of sales stations from five to seven stations, that it will no longer be by appointment only. And, uh, that they will expand, uh, their product offerings beyond their own, uh, Sierra Naturals-made products. Uh, and my understanding, uh, and then, um, and also to allow for vans to be parked overnight in a locked inside indoor facility. Um, and, uh, and my understanding is that you've reflected that there is sufficient onsite and offsite parking as a result of this engineering study that you've conducted. And the town comment that we have received that you, uh, referenced was from our own town engineer who concurred with your assessment that there is sufficient parking. Do any of the members of the board have any questions? Uh, Paul?
Yeah, um, one thing that I thought of, um, was the possibility, and I don't know what, whether this is really necessary, but, you know, I'm a lawyer, so if, I think of some of the, some of the things that could go wrong, um, including a condition that no product will be stored in the vans overnight. Or will be kept in the vans o- overnight.
Paul, a- a- at this, at this point, all we're doing is establishing what the parking requirement is for this particular type of use.
I thought that they were asking for changes in their, um, in their permit, in order to have these changes because their permit presently calls for a certain number of stations and they're increasing it. And, 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 and the permit does not allow for the parking of vans in Needham overnight. Our permit states that the vans will only be kept in, uh,
Yes, they're, they're, they're filing for an application to do the things you described, and that's set for a hearing in August. What they needed before they
It's not part of this request.
This is not part of this request. The problem here is the zoning, the zoning that we have basically lists a series of uses under section five, one, two, and what the parking requirement is for those uses. And in cases where a use is not specifically called out, um, and it's not covered in I, in the, in, by I T E, then the planning board has to establish what the parking requirement is for that use. So the purpose of this is to set what, what is the parking requirement really for a medical marijuana facility that is proposing to sell at, you know, at, at, at retail as described in the letter that Scott has just described. And engineering has gone along with the recommendation that eight parking spaces are appropriate for that use.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, excuse me, eighteen.
Okay, so we're not approving tonight the additional phase. We're not approving the, the, um, um,
The parking of the van.
Of the vans overnight.
No.
But the parking requirement is required because of the assumption that those things are being approved, isn't it?
Yes.
So aren't we putting the cart before the horse?
So i- if I could, I, I, I think that we will be filing for, for those items. I think that really the, the intent of, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think
The parking waiver be, be, be requested at, at that time?
I think the issue is that there is no parking standard for this use.
Right.
Um, and the zoning has no parking standard for the use. Um, and so they're asking the board to set what is, what is an appropriate parking standard for the use as, as it's been described.
And then when we come to the time of the application for, uh, change on the special permit, that the cha- how the board votes may influence the cha- you know, the parking outcome, and you may have to come back with a separate parking study at, you know, even after that hearing. If, you know, so this is a, this is a preliminary step, it seems.
I misunderstood, I'm, I misunderstood what he's being asked for.
Thank you.
So, um, so with that, uh, do we have any further discussion from members of the board? So hearing none, uh, uh, Lee, would you like, uh, vote for the board to determine that uh, it finds eighteen parking spaces sufficient, uh, uh, for these proposed uses?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a motion by Artie Crocker. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Natasha Spada. Any discussion on the vote? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight. Jean McKnight.
Excuse me. Aye.
Uh, we hear aye from Jean McKnight, and the chair votes aye as well. Uh, Lee, do you need any further direction from us on this matter?
Oh, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, uh, um, Scott, you are free to return to your other meeting in Cambridge. Thank you very much for squeezing out for this. We look forward to a robust review, perhaps, uh, at another time of the changes. And, um, uh, I declare this item disposed of.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, um, now comes, uh, discussion about the select boards, um, uh, goals for twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And, uh, let's see, um, the, uh, the planning board has identified a number of goals, um, based on, uh, the following main subject areas or core areas. One is uh, uh, making Needham livable. That's their first goal, and they've proposed uh, eight initiatives within that to achieve that first goal. The second goal is, uh, fostering a, a economically vital town. And with that, they've proposed five goals, uh, their third, uh, their, uh, five, uh, initiatives. Uh, their third goal is accessibility and connectedness, um, which they've proposed, uh, five initiatives. Their fourth goal is, uh, to promote a healthy and, uh, socially thriving community for which they've identified, uh, twelve, uh, thirteen initiatives. Uh, their fifth goal is to ensure public safety, um, for which they have identified, uh, two initiatives. Uh, their sixth goal is, uh, for the town to be responsibly governed, for which they have identified ten initiatives. And then, um, uh, uh, their seventh, uh, goal is to ensure an environmentally sustainable town for which they have four, um, uh, and initiatives, um. I see intersection at a number of these, on these initiatives. Um, uh, and uh, I turn this first over to any member of the, any other members of the board, if they have any observations or comments or questions about the select board's goals for the town.
Well, I, I do, uh, uh, yes.
Very good.
Um, shall I just go ahead? I made some notes, um.
Sure.
All right, um, on goal number one of livable Needham, um, plans for an investment, safe, well-maintained, and attractive buildings, et cetera. I, I, I like very much, uh, what has been listed. Uh, particularly, the second bullet point provides a variety of housing types with a full range of affordability. The fourth, uh, bullet point encourages and appropriately regulates sustainable development. And the fifth supports and enhances neighborhood livability and walkability. Um, so I just, you know, w- is it appropriate to simply, just to respond in, in a positive way and say, yes, please continue, um, these goals? If it is, I would like to do that with respect to the three I mentioned. Um, and then in the same section, um, under goal number one, there are various initiatives. And I hope that initiative number one point four, participate on the planning board's Affordable Housing Study Committee will continue because that work will continue into fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Um, the year we're in right now. Um, and so on, on, on number one. So I don't know if I should keep going on goal two, three, four, five, or just stop at one and let others respond. What would you like me to do?
I appreciate that. I'd like to, uh, uh, stop, uh, here and, uh, see if there's any further comments. Uh, one question I had is certainly support each of the initiatives and the, and the goal to ensure the town is, uh, livable as possible. Uh, one question is, um, with respect to the goals of the planning board, you know, do we consider, um, uh, exempting municipal buildings from the, you know, ordinary site plan, special permit processes? That's, uh, you know, that's, uh, But, uh, you know, that's, uh, kind of a rhetorical question for now, but it may be something that we'll come back to, although I recognize both already. But before, uh, before I do already, Jean had her hand up.
Oh, only that, in my experience, uh, as a town council and municipal, um, attorney, um, it's quite common for zoning bylaws to exempt municipal buildings, uh, from such review. Um, and I think, um, not that Needham is unique by any means, uh, in that regard, um, but it is certainly something, uh, to consider.
That's, uh, and I, I raised that because that may come up, will, will come up when I propose some type of order to, um, or framework for our action moving forward on, uh, planning initiatives for, uh, for the town. Artie?
Um, when it comes to, I'm not sure if it's, um, falling out of a special permit aspect of it, but certainly the, the town action committee as it was in part of my thought was going on now, and we're, and as part of that, we're talking about, you know, town buildings and and what they fall under as far as environmental constraints. So I mean, I think as a planning board, the environmental impact and healthiness of a community that starts to fall under, starts to merge together and it's part of that. It isn't just, it isn't just privately owned buildings that should start falling under that. It's also the public buildings as well. I don't know if that directly answers your question, but certainly.
The i- i- it's an, it's an interesting point, um, I, you know, the, uh, if we propose certain sta- we can certainly propose certain standards for, you know, for municipal buildings and require that they be, you know, meet a certain standard. Um, but administered, you know, internally, but that's, you know, that's a philosophical question that will come up, you know, that we'll deal with more substantively. You know, when we're talking about the goals for the planning board itself, uh, and in terms of sustainability, I, you know, I've, um, I'll come to that when we get to that goal. Uh, does anyone else have any other comment with respect to their first goal, the select word's first goal of, uh, making needable, Needham livable? Uh, so with the second goal for, uh, uh, ensuring an economically vital town. Jean, before I come to you, I, uh, I sit and, uh, currently chair the Council of Economic Advisor. And, uh, in an effort to help facilitate the select board in the town, um, achieve those initiatives, uh, and in particular to achieve that goal. I, um, I can say that, uh, I've re- slightly reconstituted the Council of Economic Advisors to focus on three core areas. One is our small business community. Uh, uh, two is a district focused, uh, uh, subcommittee, which I'll come back to in a moment. And then also a third subcommittee that's looking at, uh, a cluster-based economic development strategy. And the first step within that is to ident- is to help build as much as possible an inventory of our businesses in town and understand what, uh, and we, we were dealing with this with the Babson students. Um, uh, you know, before and that work kind of continues to, uh, you know, just to better understand the composition of our economy. And where we can, uh, increase and promote growth in town that ensures a diverse workforce, um, and a diverse mix of businesses in town. Going back to the district-focused, uh, subcommittee, the C E A's subcommittee looked at, uh, the Chestnut Street area and the center of town area. And, uh, is still, uh, has to meet to, um, uh, to determine what, if there's any action or recommendations that the subcommittee will make for the whole of the C E A and or for the town, but it's interesting because we were looking at Chestnut Street and I see that uh, initiative two point one is to evaluate Chestnut Street redevelopment. So I wouldn't be surprised if that initiative more importantly comes to the, um, you know, comes to either this, uh, the, um, uh, Council of Economic Advisors, or if the select board instead refers it or simultaneously refers it to the planning board. Lee, I know that the planning board, you know, Jean and, and Paul, you may have participated in this effort to build some of the overlay districts. And I know that the planning bo- uh, the planning board proposed and it, um, to town meeting, um, to, uh, change the zoning and do another overlay, which would have effectively, uh, resulted in a, um, uh, 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 new development, uh, of residential density at the Hartney-Greymont site, but down meeting at that time rejected it. Um, I do, I do note that, um, Chestnut Street, I think, re- remains a, um, a vital opportunity for the town to increase our housing and affordable housing stock. Uh, because it can promote a walkable, uh, ability to the center of town. Uh, and also to major transportation nodes, in particular, really two, um, uh, two stops on the commuter line. I'm not, say, I'm not advocating any particular redevelopment. I know that a large part of the challenge to redeveloping Chestnut Street has been, as with other geographies in town, this nation notion of fractional ownership, that, you know, these small lots are owned by separate different entities. And if one entity is not, you know, incentivized to sell, that that negates or prohibits, you know, a substantive redevelopment of an area. And I think that we're finding the town's overall goal, if we're actually going to try and achieve the, you know, those state standards of increasing workforce housing and housing, affordable housing and so on. I think Chestnut Street's a, a key area for that. What do the other members of the board think about that?
Um, I similarly, uh, uh, have some language that I wanted to put in about, um, expanding on evaluating Chestnut Street redevelopment. Uh, but before I mention that language, um, I wanted to respond, uh, Adam, to your uh, mention of three initiatives of the Council of Economic Advisors. Um, do you want to include in the list of initiatives that the select board, uh, cooperate with, um, and encourage? Um, and then then go into a, a brief description of those initiatives? Is that what you're looking to do?
No, no, I'm not. I was just wanting to, to give the board, you know, insight into some of the initiatives of the, of the, uh, Council of Economic Advisors, which are already reports into the select board. And, um, I just, you know, as chair of the Council of Economic Advisors, you know, I had met and had a chair vice chair meeting with, uh, with the select board to, um, uh, you know, to formally recommend to them, uh, that we, you know, uh, to partially reconstitute the C E A into these three subcommittees, that the overall subcommittee, the overall C E A would continue to exist. We would do our work as a subcommittee and then come back on any initiatives or recommendations to the select board as a full C E A. Um, so they're already aware of that effort.
Okay, so possibly they will, um, mention that initiative, but it would be, you know, perhaps the select board itself would make that decision and, and, and we as a planning board wouldn't be recommending anything along those lines. I, I think is what I hear you saying.
Right, I mean, if, uh, you know, what I could say is if the, if the Council of Economic Advisors has any recommendations, it reports into the select board. And if the select board is inclined, they may then refer any of those things to the, you know, to the planning board. Or they may choose to take no action on the recommendations. I don't know what those recommendations are. They haven't been, there has been no recommendations.
Okay, all right. Well, do, shall I mention the change I wanted to make to initiative two point one? Um, well, first of all, uh, just going back, um, to the goals. Um, somewhere, I think, um, there should be a statement that the town intends to respond to the M B T A Communities Act requirements. And I don't know if that's the way to put it, uh, whether it belongs under economically vital, uh, as a bullet point or if it belongs in an initiative. But I do think some things should be said about that, that is the, the thing the town is facing more than any other factor in its planning for the coming year. So somewhere it should be mentioned. Um, so that's number one, have some mention of the, uh, 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 respond, responding to M B T A Communities Act requirement.
They are already doing, by the way.
They are, yes, but there, there are some people, uh, hear it sometimes who say, um, what do we care about those grants we might lose? Just ignore it. And I think the select would should make a statement, and I think the select would has in other forums and other means made this statement that it intends to respond positively with regard to the, uh, M B D A Communities Act, uh, requirements. And that it belongs in this, um, so, uh, uh, in these goals. That's all. Um, so with regard to Chestnut Street, um, I wanted to, th- this is what I had in mind. Evaluate zoning for mixed-use buildings in the town center, Chestnut Street and Avery Square to encourage such development for suitable sites. Cause we've, we really need to revisit that zoning. And I mean, if those exact words aren't right, but I, I thought putting something.
I think that's great.
Okay, then the only other thing, um, and this is more my, I don't know if this is really something the planning board is concerned about, um.
Hold on.
Two point, oh, sorry.
Paul, uh, do you want to let Natasha finish her comment and then we'll come to you?
I didn't know Natasha was making a comment.
I'm not, I apologize, uh.
I had my hand up. That's why he's confused, but I was letting Jean finish. But yeah, Paul, go ahead. I mean, or whatever, Jean, or Paul.
That's a planning board goal. We're looking at select board goals. And, and I think every, everything that you've just described about, um, Chestnut Street in the center of town are laudable goals that we as a planning board who propose zoning changes. That's part of our charge. This is, this is a document that's setting out select board.
Yes.
And I don't know that I want the select board to start evaluating that. That's our province. It's not one of their goals.
I, I think that's a valid point. Yeah, okay.
Then going forward, I guess, uh, cause it's true, actually, you know what? Before I comment, Natasha, you had your hand up before.
I, I kinda had a, a big picture question here is are we, is there something in the select board goals that is missing that we would like included? Uh, this, we, we had this conversation and Artie was there at the climate action plant with the climate action plan group. Is there something that's missing? And then I think what Paul just said makes sense. Based on what Jean was talking about is, I think we need to set our goals as well. And maybe we have already, and I just don't know where they are, you know, I haven't seen them in a while. But I, I think, um, it's, it's imperative that we also set goals for ourselves, um, as a board, but I guess the, the question that I have, and there's a lot, you know, it's, it's a six-page document. Is there something missing as the M B T A communities, like Jean was saying, is that missing from here to be reviewed as a town? Um, uh, or not, right? So are there any like key things, like should we, should there also anything, anything related to Needham Housing Authority or something that is related to some of the things that we're doing that should be global versus our specific go- goals?
I think that's a great organizing question. I appreciate you framing that. One specific action that I would like us to take, and I haven't, I apologize, had an opportunity to chat with you offline about this. But at our pub, and Artie, I see your hand is up and I will come to you in a minute. Um, uh, Mary Ann Cooley, at our last meeting, in particular, at the, at Bullfinch's hearing, raised a very interesting point about, uh, really that relates to the town, uh, being inclusive. And what I would like to see, I'd like to work with you offline. And I would like to see, uh, us modify our applications that come before the planning board to, uh, take on more information. For instance, are, you know, is, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm phrasing this perhaps not as eloquently as they otherwise would like to, but something to the effect, you know, is this a minority or woman-owned business?
Right, what are our equity goals is what you're trying, and I think Artie's probably going to bring this up in a second, but what are our sustained, you know, environmental goals? What are equitable goals? What are, and so that we can start setting some parameters that are aligned with, and then also Lee brought up, you know, we, we, we appoint different committees. What are our goals for the appointment of those committees? And we have a, a big Nwari meeting tomorrow that we're gonna talk, there's a toolkit. So, um, one of the things in general is how can we be equitable with all the other committees also on town, so that there's a policy? So maybe that's a, that's one of the things that we should say here also. Maybe we, we wanna talk about kind of policies for, for um, for, you know, for, for, for different things. So I, I, Artie, I'm sorry, I don't mean to take up your time.
That's okay, Natasha. That's okay, uh, perfectly well, of course. Um, yeah, so, um, I mean, I liked, I mean, I know without question, we have to have what our goals are. Then we have, when we have our goals, and you know, we'll have a mix, mixed category of what they are, then we have, then we'll look at again, what are the other, what are the goals coming from the other, from the select board? If there's any other committees that we should be paying attention to. You know, the, the climate action committee, for example. Any other committees, again, we should be paying, looking at, at least looking at to see what their goals are. And then how do they fit in what, what we are, what we've, what we frame, you can, you know, will that we, will that reframe, will that make us reframe a little bit? Which will then increase the probability of success. Whatever we, whatever we do, we wanna, you know, have the probability of success. But we, again, we have our goals, again, the environmental goals. Um, you know, I, in goals as far as, you know, we're looking at parking. Are we too strict with parking in some cases? Are we not strict enough to park in other cases? Do we have some, you know, goal, goals as far as, um, do we have, do we have some, some some re- regulations that are just unnecessary? I'll use the phrase simply unnecessary. You know, it, it doesn't need to come to us. It doesn't need a, a, a reevaluation of the, of the plot lines if everything's internal to the building. I mean, what can we do to make, to make it easier for everyone in town? To make it easier to, to be a developer in town, but yet still meet all the safety requirements, meet, be having, make it meet the standards of being a good neighbor, a big, a nice environmental aspect of the town. What can we do to just make things, um, get to the bottom line sooner? Is there anything?
You're, you're talking about establishing goals for the pl- uh, planning board, which is echoing what Natasha had raised. Is that right?
Well, you know, yeah, that's right, of course. That's exactly what I'm saying. We haven't, I mean, we haven't done that yet. We, we do, we, I know we all wanna do it. We have to do it. We have to see where it fits with everyone else. In some cases, it may, it may not have to fit with anything else. In some cases, maybe, maybe it can be coalesced with what else, what else, what else is going on in town. But other select would do, that's all. We have, so we have to do that.
Paul?
So as opposed to the goals that Jean mentioned, I'm now changing a hundred and eighty degrees and agreeing with Artie and with Natasha that the goals that Natasha and Artie are raising, the diversity goals, the climate goals, environmental goals. These are goals that are really in the province of both the planning board and the select board.
There are several intersections.
Several intersections, and so these, these should be brought up as being um, goals that should be in the forefront of the select board's list. And they should be in the forefront of our list also. I think that when we have a special permit in front of us, a special permit application, not a site plan special permit, because they're, you know, that, that, but a rate, but, but a use that's allowed by site plan, I think it is perfectly appropriate for this board to, uh, have conditions in those site plans for diversity, for environmental impact, for climate change impact. And, and, um, that, 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 that should be at the forefront of, of how we. um, uh, maybe, you know, change how we, how we view and the criteria that we require in our site plan.
I
In our special permit re- reviews.
I agree, so, so we're really talking about two things. One is lead, you know, do we formalize any kind of a response to the select board, or I think we can just sufficiently say that you know, the planning board, um, uh, you know, uh, something like, you know, the planning board laws, the goals of the select board recognizes that there are certain intersections of their goals and initiatives in which the planning board can all, uh, looks to play a part. And we look forward to sharing our goals with them and working collaboratively to improve the town. And that kind of handles the, our comment on the select board. And yet, for the select, and then yet for the planning board. You, since I've been on the board, you know, we haven't really, I haven't known that the planning board to take time to embark on any kind of a uh regular planning process or even a goal-setting process. We certainly did, we certainly did do, Jean, I'll come to you in a second, I see your hands up. I, you know, it's not to say we haven't done any planning, clearly we've done some major planning. Um, I, and yet, um, it's kind, it it's almost been a bit ad hoc, so what I'm looking to do is build a framework for us that hopefully will be implemented by future chairs, and as opposed vice chairs. Uh, so that we do set aside dedicated time to build our own goals and that we set time going forward to pursue each of these initiatives. I'm in the process of, of, I've started, I've met, for instance, yesterday with uh with Green Needham and talked to them about some of, of some of their initiatives. I'm gonna meet with uh, uh, the Climate Action uh Committee. I, uh, with Stephen Frail, I think tomorrow, for instance. There may be others that we ought to, you know, to meet with, but I wanna come with a starting point to the planning board. And then we'll develop for going forward, um, together. The goals of the planning board and what initiatives we wanna, we wanna take. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
That, yeah, that's exactly what we need to do, Adam.
A few years ago, we started having special meetings. In addition to our twice-monthly regular meetings, we started having additional meetings. Lee, was it once every two months? That were devoted purely to planning?
I I think, I think we did it quarterly, but yes, we did do that.
Yeah, and somehow we seem to have lost that, and perhaps, perhaps Mr. Chair, since this isn't your province now, not mine. Um, we should consider starting, starting that up again.
I have a specific proposal to that, Paul, which uh I'll present shortly to the board.
Yep.
I've given that thought, I appreciate you bringing that up. Jean?
Um, there is a particular place now in the framework that the select board sets forth on its goals. And it's found under um item um Goal Six, um, called Responsibly Governed. Um, and within that, in the initiatives, uh, there's sections, the pages aren't numbered, so it's, it's the second last page, six point one B. What it says now is meet with the planning board to discuss, among other night, items, zoning to allow brewery slash pub uses and tree preservation strategies.
Yes.
Now, the select board did that. They did meet with us on those two things. I think the select board themselves acknowledged that the tr- the tree preservation strategies needs to be readdressed.
Yeah.
So have to leave that in. Um, maybe we're all set with the brewery pub usage, and we've, we're all set with where we're going with that, so we don't need to mention that here again this coming year. But it seems to me what we do need to mention is, and I put it this way, and housing plan strategies implementation. Cause the housing plan will come up with strategies geared toward the um annual meeting in May two thousand twenty-three. And we wanna meet with the select board and get everybody on board. Um, and I, I propose that we include, doesn't have to be those, that is exact words, housing plan strategies into implementation. But, you know, it's getting late and, you know, I, I think I made some of the notes, but I'm gonna just narrow it down to two things. Somewhere these goals should mention, um, the um responding um, to the MBTA uh Communities Act requirements. And um to insert in this section six point, you know, that I just mentioned. The housing plan implementation, uh, uh, strategies implementation. And any other thing that's very, yeah, here's one more thing. That's the slap, heard this left bird talk about, I know they're keen on this. And that is um amending our uh accessory dwelling unit by law. So it seems like this is the place to put it. And maybe the, what it should be is, you know, housing plan strategies implementation, accessory dwelling unit zoning. Um, I'll leave it at that.
I don't wanna, I, I like the first part of that, Jean. I don't wanna include accessory dwelling units because the select board decide, didn't put that in. And
We didn't put it in last year.
I think it's encompassed in the generality of um the housing language that you used.
That's true.
And I'm not sure that I wanna invite the select board to, to focus in on that right now. I think that's something for your committee and this board to focus in on.
Okay, so what do you think of making that change I just said about um housing plan strategies, um?
I want it.
And um im- implementation and putting in respond to MBTA Communities Act, uh.
Well, the, the only, the only concern I have, well, the only concern I have about the response is that we actually don't have the official MBTA plan at this point.
But we will in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Well, yeah.
Maybe we'll have it in a, probably in a few weeks.
Yeah.
The revised guidelines.
Well, we might, we might have it in a few weeks, we might have it in the fall. Yes, I agree at some point, we, no, I agree at some point, we will have.
But we, I, I, I think the state board is planning to have it in front of us during this fiscal year. And so I think it does make sense to, to include it.
Mm-hmm, so, let's, uh, so we, let's, do you wanna make some of those specific comments, those specific comments that Jean has made in addition to the general comments that I made? Let's wrap this discussion up because obviously it deals with our own goals and we need time to be able to do that. And we, you know, I, I'd like to adjourn by ten thirty and we still have four, if not five minutes to go through. Um, in addition to uh, um, other correspondence and uh reports from uh, the planning director and other planning board members. So Lee, is that fine? Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, very good. So the, uh, Jean, thank you very much for your, you know, thorough review of those goals. Uh, you know, I looked through those thoroughly too, there clearly is an intersection and to Artie, your point and really to Natasha and uh Paul and Jean. You know, we will embark on our own goal-setting exercise and a framework that will continue hopefully when you guys are, are chairs as well. Um, and I, I'd like to now uh turn our attention to the minutes, the first of which is March twenty-eighth. There are some uh changes, uh, the red lines, and then um, you had a question about, uh, um, Jean, I think, on what's
Yeah, shall I, shall I go, go down the questions, Adam?
Sure, please.
Yeah, okay, page two, on the third full paragraph. Um, it, it, we're making, uh, when Maskovich stated that pre- Panera is open until ten or eleven P P M. Then there was this sentence, he stated they are open until nine P M. Um, it was, and it's not clear who he is either. Um, should we simply say, um, he stated that Panera is open until nine P M? Because I'm interpreting that as a correction of the earlier ten to eleven? Well, I don't know how to handle that.
I would remove it.
I'm, I'm not sure it was Mankiewicz, is that his name?
Markowitz, Markowitz.
Markowitz, I'm not sure it was Markowitz who stated that, I think it was, uh.
Negoshin?
Yeah. Or maybe, or maybe Rick Mann.
It's not clear who said it.
So eventually
Yeah, but let's just delete it. Um, yeah, okay, so we'll just delete it. Um, then on page three, um, there is something about the design review, uh, it, within the paragraph having to do with design review. Um, decorate dumpsters. Um, and, and this I said, I don't have it in front of me, this, this, this had to do with um eating areas outside restaurants? And something about decorate dumpsters.
I think, no, I don't think they were decorating the dumpsters, they were decorating
The Jersey barriers.
The Jersey barriers.
Well, perhaps the reference to dumpsters should be deleted because the next phrase is Jersey barriers.
Also dumpsters.
Do you see that paragraph, design re- report?
Yes, yes, I see it and again, I'm inclined um, I'm inclined to delete that.
Just delete the direct reference to um, um, decorating dumpsters, okay? Uh, fine, then um on page four, um, um, uh, oh gosh, uh, oh, excuse me, and this, this is hard without the things in front of me, um. It's also on page three, Latina, uh, management will have dedicated personnel. Um, um, Marty Jacobs. Um, and then there was building inspector opinion on both of what? Uh, what, what was, what's the reference to building inspector opinion? Do you see those yellowed?
I
Marshes in the paragraph regarding Latina. Um, management will have dedicated personnel, um. It's not, just not clear, I what that is talking about.
I think, or I think Marty was saying that he assumes management will have dedicated personnel cause it's relating to the service of alcohol, because they did not check the box for the service of alcohol, and yet they are serving alcohol.
Okay, so maybe, oh, maybe just inserting the phrase management will have dedicated personnel for the service of alcohol would be, make that clear what he was saying.
I, I would, I don't think we have to say anything. I think we just delete, I think we just say uh, the previous sentence ends, uh, but do not check the option sentence. He assumes management will have dedicated personnel, sentence, leave it at that.
Okay.
And he's Mr. uh, DeTrizlio. Uh, stated he would, um, which confirms what Marty was saying, so it had to have been Marty, you know, Marty raising that, and then uh, Ms. Newman noted the building inspector has expressed an opinion on both. I think that relates to Lee, do you wanna confirm what that relates to? If that relates to there's dedicated personnel? And um, and that they're serving alcohol?
I don't know what that relates to.
Shall we strike it and move on?
I would strike it.
Okay, I'm gonna strike it. Okay, okay, now on page four, um. Uh, uh, there's something about um my questioning, um, are the, are those edits okay the way I made them?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's okay. Right then, um, page five, um, seat limit, seat limits and dates. Oh, are they different from, I question whether the seat limits, um, this, this restaurant seating again, and dates that are referenced on page five are seen, are different from up, from above, um, they just seem to be an inconsistency there. Should we just leave it alone and well, maybe?
So, cause I think they're just relating to different service hours. One relates to, I think, a lunch hour and the other relates to a dinner hour.
Hmm. Does, does it need clarification or just leave it the way it is?
I'd leave it the way it is.
Okay. Okay. All right, so fine, and then um, just one little change on page seven. Somebody mentioned they're at two hundred and fourteen commercial breweries. Do you think the person was speaking of me, of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
I think they said as much, but it may not have been picked up, but that's true.
It wasn't in the minutes. Okay, so just add, just, uh, as I, as I added it in Massachusetts. If everybody knows that's what was meant. Um, then page eight. Um, what I said is, leave it, um, something about the state regulations. Um, does it?
This negotiation feels the board should learn what regulations are.
Yeah, what, what is it we're learning? Um, we should learn that the state like regulations are, is that?
Yes, about, I think, to, um, cannabis.
Yes, so it's okay to make, make the change the way I suggested it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, um, then, uh, now we're going on to, so, um, okay, so with those, um, I moved that we accept the minutes of March twenty-eighth with the redlining as shown and with the changes as discussed.
I have a motion, do I have a second to approve the minutes of March twenty-eighth?
Second.
I have a second by uh Paul Alpert, a motion made by Jean McKnight, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
I was not there, will not vote.
Thank you very much. Uh, Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And uh, the chair votes aye. We have approved the minutes of March twenty-eighth as amended.
And to be specific, uh, Mr. Chair, I was not on the committee, I was not on the board at that time.
Yes, I apologize, I called on you. I was deliriously excited for you, though.
So, now we're going to the April fifth uh minutes and the, the questions are fewer, so let's see if we can, we can get them, do them quickly. Page three, on the second paragraph. He, and I think the he is Mr. Block, noted the opinion by Foley and Lardner did not find that conclusion.
Yes.
Uh, it's, it's not clear what, is it, is that clear, what, what that? The opinion by Foley and Lardner did not find that conclusion. What is the conclusion that's being referred to?
I think it was, there was varying opinion, uh, there was this relates to the, um, I think the application for the Panera Bread complex. And there was a separate opinion that was given by Foley and Lardner. And I remember this came up, um. I remember this came up, um. And I, and we do remember what their, what their, oh, we were dealing with a very technical question about the issue of what is regarded as a medical clinic. And, and Foley and Lardner have written an opinion that threaded the needle. The result of which would seem to have concluded that they would not, that they were not required to apply for what would be, uh, a license for the clinic as a whole. Separate from ensuring that the professionals providing medical care in the facility were themselves appropriately licensed by their own boards. And, um, someone in the comment and I responded that I didn't think that that, I Uh, feels like it might be out of place.
Hmm. Well, the simple thing to do would be to delete it. Leave it alone just as it is, even if it might not be clearer to some readers. Or come up with some other wording, just leave it the way it is. Okay. Okay, uh, all right, then, um, this, the next change is really simple. Page four, the third paragraph. J- the, the speaker Jill Khan did not give any address. In such a circumstance, should we put something in like local resident? Or leave it just alone, just with the person's name?
I'm surprised you don't have her address from Lee, any of your, she's participated in public hearings before.
We can probably get it out of the list of residents and find her address.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll insert an address. She, she may have said her address, but just it somehow didn't get recorded. Um, okay. Oh, so we'll find and insert. Okay, um, and then in the fifth paragraph, and this is something I think you, you said, Adam, I, I didn't write down who said it. But in the fifth paragraph, you see where I yelled it, I thought it perhaps it made more sense and, and, and you meant more rather than less in that, in that sentence. You can't have more than this certain percentage. Yeah, so that word less should just be changed to, to more, okay. Then on page five, at the top of the page, should the word people, and I think this may be something that, um, Natasha said, should the word people actually be professionals? Because that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
The number of professionals. You think so? Yeah, okay. Um, then, um, on page seven, the first full paragraph. Something about an amend- amendment to a zoning bylaw. Now, I added these words. Um, should be made carefully, um, because I, I didn't really understand this sentence, what, what, what was being said here? Um, do you think that to add the words that amendments to the zoning bylaw should be made carefully? Is really what was intended by?
This is for you. Uh, he suggested a while ago it should go to town meeting in the fall. Rather than now, he feels this has been rushed.
This is breweries, breweries.
Right, and this needs to be, uh, an amendment. Clearly should have been, he would have, Paul would have said zoning bylaw faded out, he used to be made. Have you want to add the word carefully?
Can you read this to me? I don't have it in front of me, Adam, can you?
So, um, uh, Mr. Albert took a, uh, just to give you a little bit more broader context, Paul, relating to breweries is, uh,
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Albert took a drive down Crescent Road, this is residential. It was residential, then it opens up to a large industrial area. He thought that was a perfect place for either of them. He decided Mr. Wolfson had a legitimate gripe and feels it is a better place than Arbor Street. Mr. Albert stated he will approve the amendment of the zoning bylaw. That, I think it should be, that is being discussed as opposed to our. But when it gets to a vote, he is going to vote no. He sees it as a solution in search of a problem. He suggested a while ago it should go to town meeting in the fall. And then it's added rather than now. He feels this has been rushed and an amendment to the blank. Jean inserted zoning bylaw, which makes sense. Needs to be made. And then Jean, I think, made an editorial comment by adding the word carefully. Do you want to add the word carefully or?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
And it was, that may not have been exactly what I said, but it certainly is the, is the intention of, of what I was.
I remember, I remember y- you were fairly hot in temperature.
I was.
On the subject.
Sometimes.
I just, you know, very rarely, typically about something I may say. Um, so, I, uh, uh, just, you know, only kidding, so, uh, that's fine. So let's move forward then.
What's up with that? Then on the last paragraph regarding Hunting Road, and Lee, this is for you. Um, where it says, Mr. Newman noted. Um, I just found it was sort of unclear what the words were or what the point was.
I was just trying to say that it, that, that it was the board's, um, responsibility obligation to report back to town meeting its recommendation on the zoning article.
Do you want to make it, ma- make a change that makes that more clear? Um?
Sure, Ms. Newman noted that, um, it was the board's, um, responsibility to report back to town meeting its recommendation on the zoning article.
Perfect, great change.
It sounds like exactly.
All right, so with regard to the minutes of April fifth, um, I move that we accept the minutes of April fifth with the redlining as shown and with the changes discussed tonight.
Second.
We have a motion made by Jean McKnight, a second by, uh, uh, Paul Alpert to approve the minutes of April five, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we unanimously approve the April five minutes, however.
Four to nothing.
But yes, we, we, we note, uh, we can note for the record, um, uh, Artie's abstention because he was not a member of the board at the time. Um, uh, uh, Jean, before we go to April nineteen, given that it's, uh, ten twenty-five, I'd like to actually now call on Lee to see if you have any, you know, reports that you want to report in.
Well, the only report I was gonna give and Jean, maybe you're the, you're the, uh, maybe you want to give this report on the last meeting of the Housing Working Group. Um, you and Natasha on what we covered and with the subgroup, um, reports.
Okay, well, um, for the zoning subgroup, the presentation was made by Oscar Merz. Um, and Oscar, uh, presented, um, uh, ideas for rezonings. Um, particularly to respond to the MBTA Communities Act requirement so that we know that the regular, the, um, guidelines are still in, uh, draft form. Um, um, and also, but also to suggest, uh, some other areas that might be rezoned. Um, for multifamily housing or for uh, a couple, just a couple of areas along the kind of Highland Avenue spine. Uh, where you might have a, just a couple of blocks of single family, maybe that could be two family. Um, but mostly it was, um, suggestions for responding to MBTA Communities Act um, guidelines. So that was the zoning, um, um, subgroups report. Um, then Natasha, would you like to present the other report?
Sure, well, there was also, um, other pressure, there, we had three subgroups. Je- Jean subgroup, which was the zoning, we had a preservation, but preserving, um, housing and, um, discussing future of housing, um. That was another subgroup and then the subgroup that I was, um, a part of was the uh, housing, uh, the capacity subgroup. And we talked about, um, racial and economic diversity and equity, town owned land, need of housing authority. Um, the public schools, the capacity for that, the, and the capacity of town resources for ADU zoning, MBTA communities and the new neighborhood development. And then, um, transportation and communications, so, um, all, all of this information was, is, was given over to, well, was shared with everyone. And it's gonna be, it would, it's gonna implicate kind of the development of the first draft of the housing plan, which I think is, um, Leah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's gonna happen at the end of the summer, will be the first draft for every, for every member to, to, um, respond and review. Um, so they have to do their work on that and, um, and then we'll come back together and have a community meeting. Another community meeting and then have, um, the final draft with the final, uh, by the end of, by October, I believe, right?
Right, that's right. And I think in the next meeting that we have scheduled, um, in July, hopefully the MBTA guidelines will be out. So that, that meeting is gonna be focused around, um, those guidelines and the committee's um, response to them and also I think looking at, you know, str- you know, strategic action items. I think we had um, a, 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 a session previously on the overall arching goals of the, of the housing plan. But then what some of the more strategic goals of the plan should be is also gonna be discussed in July.
And the, the preservation, um, committee, uh, also focused on, also focused on um, the, the large house, um, the changes that were made to our zoning bylaw to respond to the concern about, uh, uh, chairdoms and large houses and um, the, that a restudy is needed of those changes and, uh, whether further changes are needed. But without suggesting any changes, but just saying it's an area that needs to be studied. Um, the zoning committee I might mention also mentioned another area of study. And that is, uh, three or four areas very similar to Hunting Road. Um, with a development pattern is on, is for smaller lots, um, already developed areas. Um, whereas the, they are actually in the, um, residential, um, A-zone, the, for the acre lots and whether that should be looked at. So, uh, I think that pretty much summarizes the reports and the schedule, so.
Um, the other thing I have to, I, um, is, is, is the zoning for the brewery. Um, and so the select board, I think, reviewed, um, some the, some policy questions around their current liquor policy at their last meeting. I haven't listened to the tape of that meeting yet, I will. Um, um, but the goal is to have the, um, the article, I think, on your agenda in July. The, the zoning article as it relates the brewery zoning, um, on your meeting in July so that it, we can start the process to make a town meeting in, in the fall. Um, and I think so far, I think there are really probably two, um, items that will, will, will require your, your attention. One is going to be, I think, a definition of tasting room, which I think Town Council was, is recommending be added to um, the definition section. Um, and then, of course, the conversation about what zoning districts, again, you want to um, allow these various uses to occur, the, the, the brew pub and the brewery. Um, but I'll get you the materials. I think, if I haven't already distributed the materials that were available to the select board at their last meeting when they considered changes in their liquor license policy as it relates brew pubs and breweries.
So Paul, this will be your opportunity, if you want to include again the industrial district that Lou Wolfson was advocating for where he owns property. Um, and whether we do it broadly for all industrial districts or we include that area near Arbor Way, which effectively is the, um, Three Squares site and and Crescent, and we can have, you know, and hopefully we'll have a dis- and we'll have a discussion about.
We'll have a discussion about it. I mean, it, it, I think we can go either way because it, it's a special permit process and so, you know, if somebody wants to put a brew pub on hillside. Um.
You mean, uh, or Crescent?
No, no, I'm talking about ra- rather than, rather than the lineating, um, Arbor and
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Just say the industrial zone, the, but it's by the permit. And so if somebody were to come in with an application for a brew pub on hillside, you know, I don't, I don't know that we would allow it on the special permit be- because it's right across the street from a residential.
Right.
Forgive, forgive me guys, but are we not getting, getting into the discussion about brew pubs, which is meant for, uh, I don't mean to, not, not, I don't mean any disrespect. We're discussion of.
We're not, we're not going any deeper, Artie. Thanks for bringing that up.
We, we're talking about what was raised, which is the report by by the planning director on where the select board is and where we're going and what's coming in front of us.
One, one item that I can, uh, uh, add, um, is I've been the planning board representative to the Transportation Planning Review Committee. And, uh, the Transportation Planning Review Committee was set up as an ad hoc committee from the Select Board to, um, uh, to review the transportation and traffic committees that the town has. There are two, one is the, uh, um, T Mac. And the other is the transportation, effectively the transportation committee. And I think what will ultimately happen, that the ad hoc committee has almost completed its work. I did a lot of work on, uh, on one of the, uh, subcommittees that was revising the charge for T Mac. T Mac will be replaced by, um, uh, well, I should say the subcommittee has made recommendations to, uh, revise the charge of T Mac. Uh, that.
Can you tell me what T Mac stands for again?
Trans, uh, uh, Traffic Management Advisory Committee, I think, is that right, Lee?
Okay.
Yes.
The, the traffic committee, okay.
Yeah, which typically hears, you know, you know, petitions, I want a sidewalk here, I want, you know, re-stripe, uh, put a stop sign there, that kind of thing. I don't mean in any.
Traffic committee, okay.
I'm not trivializing those petitions, that's, but that, I'm just identifying, that's typically what they hear. As opposed to the transportation committee, and I don't, is this, Jean, your husband sits on one of the other? Is it?
He's, he sits on the transportation committee, which concerns itself with the MBTA. Um, he's right here, if you want to talk to him, buddy.
Thank you. So there, so there is some discussion to, um, turn that into more of a, because the, 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 the initial remit for the transportation committee advocating for greater change specifically for uh, you know, greater access to the, uh, um, the MBTA. Ha, you know, has effectively changed that a new committee would be struck up to, um, uh, to really handle more long-term and medium-term transportation planning initiatives. And there would be a representative from T Mac, as there is now, on a new transportation planning committee. Uh, it would deal with things about the MBTA, but it would also deal with all modes uh, of transportation, bike lanes, uh, you know, uh, sidewalk, potentially to make a bind on sidewalk management. Roadways, pedestrian safety, you know, it's a multimodal transportation review committee. So, or a multimodal, yeah, I, policy planning committee. Um, so that is an update that I have on that item. Um, we have received two items of correspondence in our. Um, we have received two items of correspondence in our packet. One is from the residents, uh, Jackie DeWolf and her husband regarding the street ca- street scape project. Her email was extraordinarily comprehensive and, um.
I noted that that was actually addressed to the select board.
Right, but I think.
Got a copy, but it was addressed to the select board.
Right, it was because they're managing the street scape, uh, project, but it did come to us because they wanted to you know, inform the planning board, in particular of, you know, the concern of what is perceived as changing uh, Great Plain Avenue, uh, into more of a, um. Uh, uh, you know, a traffic throughput. You know, a runway to make it more friendly for vehicles. And she was making the, she was, and her husband were advocating that, you know, that may be the antithesis of the goal of trying to ensure the viability and vitality of a pedestrian safe downtown. That could also.
And bicycle safe.
And bicycle safe, correct, and that was similarly echoed by, uh, Bob and Sandra Petit. Who also, uh, uh, emailed, um. Relating to the same subject matter with a similar, uh, advocacy, um. So the only items outstanding in our agenda at this point is the minutes from April nineteen and April twenty-five.
That would be pretty quick because, uh, I have no questions about them, do you want me to go right ahead with motions?
Sure do.
Okay, I move that we accept the minutes of April nineteenth, um, uh, with the redline changes shown.
Second.
I have a motion from Jean McKnight, a second by Paul Alpert, to approve the minutes of April nineteen with the redline changes. Uh, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight. I was there, hey, what, what?
Was that your first meeting?
What am I, what am I, sliced bread?
Was that your first meeting?
Uh, the first, first poll meeting.
Adam, what am I sliced bread? Adam, I point that out to you. As a member of the tribe.
As opposed to matza?
No, as opposed to chopped liver. What am I chopped liver?
Well, chopped liver is better on matza. So, Artie, look, I intended no offense, I, I, I couldn't recall your, your, um. The date of your arrival, so, uh, I forgive me, um. I will retake the vote, Artie, uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
I don't know if I wanna vote now, but I'll vote, I'll vote.
I'll vote, yes.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we have approved as amended the April nineteen minutes, uh.
Okay, I move that, uh, we approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth with the cha- changes shown in redline.
Artie, would you like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
I yield to Artie.
We have a motion by, uh, Jean McKnight, uh, second by Artie Crocker. Uh, to approve the minutes as amended for April twenty-fifth. Any discussion, hearing none, I come to the vote, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have amended, we have approved the minutes as amended for April twenty-five. I have a motion to adjourn. Uh, um, Paul Alpert is, uh, second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote, uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we sit adjourned.